Good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone to our Monday, August 10th Fayetteville City Council Meeting. We welcome you all who are joining us by social media. We have a council member, Councilmember Dawkins will not join us, will not be with us tonight. We are joined by phone, I think, by Councilmembers Waddell. So, welcome everyone. At this time, we would like to have item 2.0s to invocation. Councilman here, Minister here.
Thank you, Mayor. Lord, we, we just thank you, Lord, for just giving us another opportunity to come before you. Lord, we ask you to guide us through every agenda item that we may do the, the will of the citizens of Fayetteville. And Lord, also, we ask you to continue to touch us individually and touch us as a group. That we will work together on one accord, that we will show the love of Jesus Christ. And Lord, we just thank you for what you're doing for our, our city and how you're protecting the citizens from the COVID-19, Father. We, we thank you so much for that, Lord. We ask you to continue to just to bless us and bless our country. Bless each and every neighborhood, Father, within our city limits and within the, the county, Father. And we just glorify you, Father. We thank you. We salute you. And all of these petitions, Father, that we ask tonight, we ask them in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Councilman here. Item 3.0 is the Pledge of Allegiance. Ask that we would please remain. We would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. Councilman Davis. See your light, sir? Ma'am?
I have an announcement.
Okay. Apologize. I did skip the announcements and recognitions. We have several. Thank you, Councilwoman. I will circle to you here just a moment. Announcement, COVID update. Mr. Scott Bullard, is he present, Mr. Hewitt? Is he joining us by Zoom or? Okay. It's okay. Uh, well, I will call on Councilman Davis, you know, he's a good brother, but he, he has his Omega. Sci-Fi Fraternity has a resolution that I will have to turn the mic over to him.
Mr. Mayor, will I go down to the?
Please, please, sir.
Honored. I feel honored. Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. City of Fayetteville, all the citizens, thank you all for allowing me this opportunity to grace not just the diocese, but our great city. I simply have for you tonight a resolution on behalf of the Tau Gamma Gamma Chapter, Number 850 Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated, the greatest fraternity in the world. And I would like to read this resolution and then submit it to the city. At a meeting of Tau Gamma Gamma Fort Bragg, Chapter of the Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated, Fort Bragg, North Carolina, Fayetteville Cumberland County held at Fayetteville on 2 July 2020. The resolution pertains to adopting police reform, collective support to end racism, and repurposing of the Market House in Fayetteville, North Carolina/Cumberland County. It reads, whereas during these unprecedented times with the COVID-19 pandemic and with the movement of social justice in communities of color in every state, we have seen activism and calls for comprehensive change in law enforcement and community relations. The time is now to move from activism to action. Whereas, the Justice in Policing Act of 2020, HR 7120 S3912 was introduced on June 8th, 2020 by the Congressional Black Caucus Chair, Representative Karen Bass, Senator Cory Booker, Senator Kamala Harris, and Representative Gerald Nadler. This is a major step towards racial justice and accountability for law enforcement. Whereas, the men of Tau Gamma Gamma Chapter, Fort Bragg, Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated, are proud to support this legislation. Moreover, we also support the recent resolutions and active steps of other Fayetteville organizations, our mayor and the city council, to end racism, bigotry, social injustice, and ensure the implementation of total police reform. Whereas, we are convinced changing the culture of policing in communities can only be accomplished by bipartisan support. We ask that our local government be committed to the adoption, implementation of the eight Can't Wait Police Forms, as well as the following. Better education for police and cultural diversity and community understanding of policing with the public. Number two, we support better allocation of funding for the police and more funding if required. Number three, a comprehensive database that reports and prevents the rehire of problematic police officers who have been cited in hate, brutality, and racist activities. Number four, an increase in the punishment of hate crimes from a misdemeanor to a felony. Number five, 100% body cameras worn at all times. Law enforcement should not have the option of when to turn them on and to turn them off. Number six, transparency of all racist acts, police brutality, or hate crimes. Number seven, the repurposing of the Market House that identifies the historical struggle and achievement of African-Americans in Fayetteville. Whereas, we, the men of Tau Gamma Gamma Chapter, have wholeheartedly supported this resolution for full implementation in our city, country, state, and nation. And the men of Tau Gamma Gamma pledge their support to the solutions and to the work to make Fayetteville better for all. Finally, we invite our mayor, police chief, and other city officials to address our chapter during our normal meeting as welcomed guests. Now, therefore, be it there by proclaimed by the men of Tau Gamma Gamma Chapter, Fort Bragg, North Carolina, Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated, Fayetteville Cumberland County, North Carolina, that the police reform collective support to racism and repurposing of the Market House in Fayetteville be established by the city council for consideration and implementation. Dated 1 August 2020, Tau Gamma Gamma Chapter, Fort Bragg, Fayetteville, Cumberland County, North Carolina, undersigned by the men of the Tau Gamma Gamma Chapter of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated. Mr. Mayor, Council?
Thank you, sir.
I'll leave this with you.
Thank you. Tell your brothers thank you as well. All right. We have Mr. Scott Bullard on the line. Mr. Bullard, are you with us?
Hello?
Hey, Mr. Bullard. Hey, sir, can you hear us?
Yes, sir. I've got you. Can you hear me?
We hear you. Yes, sir. How are you? Can you give us an update on COVID in Cumberland County?
Yes, sir. We're under our HDA, a state of emergency at this hour. That's 53 days we had under the stay-at-home order. 14 of those were Phase 1, of course. And then, this is the 80th day of the safer at home, which includes Phase 2. Statewide, 136,844 cases. 3,162 of those are Cumberland Counties. And then, 2,172 fatalities, 51 of which are part of our county. If you do, the ones presumed to recover and subtract them out, 116,969 of this date, we're looking at just a little less than 20,000 folks that are maybe not hospitalized within the 1,111 in the hospital today, but people that are positive with COVID-19. My biggest remarks tonight are really in anticipation of what we see will come together on Monday when school resumes. And in a lot of ways, this is going to be a living torch that is going to carry us through maybe what the coming days are going to look like as it unfolds before us. I really don't know any more to say to that, other than we're curious, we're watching, great preparations have been made, and we want to see what this school reopening looks like and what lessons we can derive from it. Notwithstanding that, I'll be subject to any questions you might have, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Bullard. Council, we have any questions for Mr. Bullard? Sir, as always, we appreciate your, your very detailed summarization of, of the status and the state of affairs in Fayetteville and in North Carolina. Thank you for your good work, and we'll check in with you soon.
Thank you, sir, and, and thank you for everybody wearing the masks, staying six feet apart, and washing the hands.
Oh, yeah. That's definitely an important part of this discussion, to continue to social distance and wear a mask. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, I will turn it over to, I'll catch the council members who have announcements at, at the end. The NC3C Award, if I can meet Mr. Kevin Arata or someone from his team, Ms. Angel, at the podium, Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are here to let our audience know that the City of Fayetteville Corporate Communications Staff recently won three Excellence and Communications Awards from the NC3C organization. And my understanding is that Assistant City Manager Angel Wright Lanier is going to give us a little bit of history of that. Ben, congratulations.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Kevin Arata and the Corporate Communications Staff for their winning Excellence Awards. Out of 200 awards, there were some 192 awards submitted across the state through 22, 22 cities and counties. Our folks brought home three. So, they received a first-place award for the category of crisis communication for their response to Hurricane Dorian. They had a second-place award for the multi-platform campaign, and this was to showcase the city's investment and partnership with Secra Stadium. And then, they won another second-place award for digital technology and digital external newsletter and blog. The city's entry was the resident-focused newsletter, City Happenings. Let's take a moment to congratulate Kevin and Corporate Communications.
Mr. Mayor, as you are coming back up to the diocese, I also want to just also congratulate our communication team. I have gotten a lot of calls about what was posted, our new opening of our council meetings. I got several calls from people, and they were very, they really appreciated. They thought it looked nice, very good. So, job well done, very professional. Citizens of Fayetteville really like it.
Thank you, Councilman here. Council, any other accolades, of course. We echo all of that. Mr. Arata, you and your team do a great job communicating to the citizens, so thank you. At this time, I will turn it over to, now, this is Mayor Pro Tim Jensen presented to Councilman, presented by Councilman Wright. The food drive, volunteers, did you all have a presentation?
We did have presentations, but those presentations... I will just say from, from here, we mailed all presentations out to all organizations, individuals that participated in the COVID-19 food drive. It was a great success. I don't have the actual number of the pounds of the, of the actual donations, but this is a list of those that participated in the food drive. Councilwoman Ingram, Angela Bailey, Fay Hagan, Robert Council, Chanina Everett, Don Tabbert, Grant Tabbit, Sandra Blackham Blackman, Christian Locke, Jeremy Wright, Jaden Wright, Grace Bethay, Jamel Dorn, Pat Timmons Goodson. And I, I would say that our hats off to Judge Goodson. She was there all day with us, and she did a great job. Got, got there, rolled up her sleeves, and got it done. Tony Stewart, Tommy Cartwright, Michael Demott, and Alexander Demato. Max Lancaster held a food drive in this neighborhood in Gates 4. And Vernika Lancaster delivered food collected by Max. City staff did a great job. My hats off to them. And Andrew Tibbs, you guys, I tell you what, and I told them that we have the best staff in, in this state. Those guys got there, worked all day, and I just wanted to commend everyone, and we did a great job. We loaded two buses full of food, stocked the shelves of Second Harvest Food Bank. Want to really accommodate Dr. Whitfield. He did a great job tallying, I'm sorry? Three tons. Thank you for that number. We, we raised three tons of food and, and items necessary for families in need. So, just give yourselves a hand and a pat on the back, and I think we're looking at doing this again soon. And we're talking about it, and, and we're gonna do it again. So, thank you so much for participating, all of you, and for the city council and the mayor for the visionary mindset to do this for those in need during this very challenging time of this pandemic. And thank you once again. Also, I want to thank those that were on the committee. Councilwoman Banks McLaughlin, Councilwoman Kinston, and who else was on that committee?
That was it?
That was it? Oh, and me, the chair. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilman Wright, and certainly he, he picked it up. You know, you all were being very modest on yourselves. You all worked diligently. You, you served the community well with this homelessness and poverty committee. They wanted to make sure that the most vulnerable in our community, who are impacted the most with a situation like COVID and every other major event fared well in this community. And three tons of food to, to the Second Harvest Food Bank is phenomenal. So, you guys ought to be commended. Thank you. Councilwoman Kinston, chairperson, Councilman Larry Wright, and Councilwoman Banks McLaughlin, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I missed some. I would do it injustice if I don't mention these people. The As One Prayer Walk, Heal the Land Ministries, the Fayetteville Church, Humble Servant Ministries, NAACP Donation, The Bicycle Man, and Coonup Up Barber Shop, and Ron Burick, Fort Bragg American Federation. They all helped in giving donations and chipped in to make this possible. So, thank you all. And if you was not mentioned, you know, charge it to our hearts, and our heads are not our hearts. God bless.
Thank, thank you, Councilman Wright. At this time, speaking of which, I will go to Councilwoman Banks McLaughlin, who also had a similar act of kindness this weekend. Tell us a little bit about your project.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Well, this past weekend, Saturday, I put together myself and Trade Center Elite put together a back-to-school care pack drive, and it was very successful. This coming Saturday, August 15th, we'll be hosting the back-to-school care pack giveaway. So, parents, please bring your children out. We're gonna have a lot of school supplies. We're also gonna be feeding the students, and in the backpacks, we'll have not only school supplies, but we'll have masks, hand sanitizer, so things that be beneficial with this COVID-19 going on. Again, that's August 15th from 12 to 3:00, and that is at New Life Bible Church. The address is 1420 Hope Loop Road, and again, that's from 12 to 3:00. So, parents, please come out.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Ingram, you have some announcements for us?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. I am coming to you on behalf of the census, of course. As we know, the census deadline is no longer October 31st. It was shortened by a month, and I think that needs to be shared. The new date is September 30th. And so, I urge you to complete your census today. If you are attending church on Sunday, ask your pastor to set up an iPad in the lobby so that you can complete, complete your census. There are three ways that you can complete it. You should have received a mailing in the mail so you can send back. You can also go online to complete it at my2020census.org. And you can also call in where there are 13 languages available and as well as online at 1-844-330-2020. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And just to reiterate that, you all, we are somewhat behind compared to the state average for Cumberland County, so much so that we received a call, I received a call from the Secretary of Commerce, Secretary Wilbur Ross, who said that Cumberland County in Fayetteville, you all have to, have to work hard to get your, your response numbers up. So, I thank you, Councilwoman Ingram, for being very diligent and consistent with mentioning that at each meeting. But folks, we are appealing to you that this will literally cost our schools, our community, millions, tens and millions of dollars for the next decade if we do not fill this out. So, we will have people in the area that will be coming to your home. They will maintain social distance and, and continue to be careful in light of the pandemic. But we need your help with completing the census. The children of this community, the people of this community are counting on you. So, we need that. So, thank you, Councilwoman Ingram, for bringing that to our attention. And at this time, I will ask if we could get our North Carolina Teacher of the Year, Ms. Maureen Stovall. Can someone get her? I'll meet you at the podium, and I'll go to Mayor Pro Tim Jensen and Councilman Davis. That kind of tag-team this one.
On behalf of the mayor and the city council of Fayetteville, North Carolina, our key to the city and coin are proudly presented to Ms. Maureen M. Stover, 2020 Burgess's Welcome Fund North Carolina Teacher of the Year. In grateful recognition of her service and dedication to the support, access, and betterment of students of Fayetteville while making a direct and lasting impact to our community, August 2020. We are, we are here with royalty. I think you're probably the first North Carolina Teacher of the Year from Fayetteville?
There was one other in the 1970s when it was Fayetteville.
So, it has been long overdue, and congratulations and thank you from all of us.
Ms. Stover, what school?
So, I was teaching at Cumberland International Early College High School. I also taught at Reed Ross Classical School. But because I'm now the Teacher of the Year, I have a one-year sabbatical where I will travel around the state and be an educational ambassador. Thank you.
Well, she, she had no idea. She was getting this tonight. We have to thank Councilman Davis, who's been very diligent with making sure that we gave you accolades, just a token of appreciation of a grateful city. Our children are our future, and it takes a special breed of people to, to do what you do, and we thank you for it. And we thank you for how you represent us in the state. And so, give you the mic for a few moments if you'd like to tell us something about yourself?
Well, thank you so much. I really, really appreciate this. We are a military family, and we decided to retire in Fayetteville because we feel like this is home. And so, we are, I'm, I'm very happy that I was able to bring this honor back to Cumberland County Schools and to the city of Fayetteville. It's very exciting. Our students are very deserving of the recognition that we're getting at the state level because of the Teacher of the Year program. And so, to have the opportunity to be able to be the, the voice for our kids at the state level is so important to me. So, I'm very, very excited for our students. I'm very, very proud of the students we have in Cumberland County. Dr. Conley has done a phenomenal job of leading our county schools, making sure our students are getting everything that they need to get, and making sure that our teachers are getting everything that we need to get. But it is a whole team that gets us there. And so, having a great, a great partnership with our city council and with our, our county commissioners is a huge part of having successful schools. So, we truly appreciate the support we get from the Fayetteville City Council. We truly support, we appreciate your support, Mayor Colvin. It's truly a team effort, and when we all work together for our kids, we're able to give them the best opportunities possible as they go forward into the future. So, very, very proud. I actually have two sons who have graduated from Cumberland County Schools. My third son will graduate this year. So, in addition to being a educator in Cumberland County Schools, I'm also a proud parent of three Cumberland County School graduates. So, thank you very, very much for your support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right. Council, I think that covers our announcements. Were we missing anyone? Except you. Yes, sir.
Mayor, if I could ask our Director Sheila Thomas-Anbet to come forward and introduce a new staff member?
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Ms. Sheila, how are you? Doing that well, huh?
Put an answer from there. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. Please do come up. So, I would like to introduce our new city engineer. Actually, the position has been retitled Engineering Division Manager, Mr. Kent Jackson, to this council. I know that this particular division gets a lot of focus from the council. And I'd like you to see, put a name and a face together here, so the questions that were directed at me can be directed at Kent. I'm just kidding. But let me... No, I'm just kidding. So, Kent is a licensed engineer who has, has led a multitude of local government programs in planning, operations, and service functions. Some of his recent experience include Public Services Director for the Town of Leland, Town Engineer for the Town of Morrisville, Director of State Construction Office, the state of North Carolina, and Director of Construction Management for the Town of Apex. He has over 20-plus years of experience and has balanced his professional career with numerous volunteering activities on critical local and state, state boards and commissions. He will lead the Engineering Division of Public Services Department... He will lead the Engineering Division of Public Services Department, which includes Stormwater Division, Engineering Development Review, General Engineering, which is the construction of roads and bridges and pavements, so on and so forth, and construction inspections and management. So please welcome Kent Jackson.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Jackson, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Pleasure to be with you tonight, Mayor, and members of the council. Very pleased to have been selected for this role with the city of Fayetteville. Everybody has been extremely welcoming so far, and the staff seems great. So it's been a very enjoyable first almost month now. So Sheila was describing my experience, and I wanted to look behind me to see who she's talking about, you know, these great things. So I appreciate that, Sheila. But, you know, basically, I look forward to working with you through City Manager to help accomplish your goals for the city, particularly as it relates to all those things Sheila mentioned, and really focusing on delivering the things that you graciously fund through the budget cycle each year. So that will be my focus along with working under Sheila's direction and with the staff. And I look forward to it.
Well, we welcome you, sir.
And I'm a native North Carolinian, attended North Carolina State, so...
Mr. Jackson, did I hear storm water?
I don't...
I need to talk to you. Just kidding.
We appreciate you, sir, and we are nice most of the time, so we appreciate it. But you've got some council members that will probably be your best friend. Councilman Dawkins and Wright, more than likely.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right, Counsel.
I have a question, Mayor, before we go forward.
Yes, sir.
Mr. City Manager, this position, though I did hear storm water, I thought I heard some form of construction or concrete or something. This is not... Well, I don't want to say it's not. Is this construction engineer, civil engineer responsibilities also or not? Because, you know, we've been talking... Is this that position that's being filled?
No, sir. That position has been filled, but that person does not start until September. And when they start, we would probably bring them in as well and introduce them at that time.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. That was what I wanted to...
Good question. All right, Counsel. Item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. Councilman Davis.
Yes, Mayor. Counsel, if it pleases you, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda minus item 6.09. Again, approve the agenda minus item 6.09.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda with the exclusion of item 6.09. I had a second by Councilmember Kinston. Any discussion on the motion?
Mayor Colvin, I have some discussion on the motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we... Is this the vote to approve consent, or are we just approving the agenda right now?
Just the agenda.
Consent item I'd like to pull also.
Yes, ma'am. It's just the agenda.
Okay, so I'll hold my consent item until we get there.
Okay. All right, Counsel, any further discussion? All right, look to you for your votes. Councilwoman Waddell?
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those who are present. All right, item 6.0 is the consent agenda. Councilwoman Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I'd like to pull item 6.10 for discussion and an up-down vote.
Okay. All right. Any other items under the consent agenda? All right, Counsel, we will... Councilwoman Waddell will need a motion to approve with the exception of item 6.10.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 6.09, as presented by Councilmember Davis, and item 6.10 for discussion and an up-down vote.
Second, sir.
Okay. So there's a motion by Councilmember Waddell. Madam Attorney, do we need to include 6.09 since it was taken out in the previous action?
That's correct. 6.09 is no longer on the agenda.
No longer relevant. Okay. So Councilwoman Waddell, can you amend that just to include the item that you were interested in pulling?
Absolutely. I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 6.10 to be pulled for discussion and an up-down vote.
Okay. There's a motion by... Thank you. There's a motion by Councilmember Waddell to approve with the exception of item 6.10. There's a second by Councilmember Hare, was that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Counsel, I'll ask for your lights tonight to be recognized just to make sure that I don't miss it. But we have the... Any discussion on the motion by Councilmember Waddell and Hare? Press lights if you have a discussion or question. All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilwoman Waddell?
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those present. Item 6.10, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to pull this item particularly because as we're having the discussion about changing the ordinance to prohibit sleeping in parks overnight, I expressed some concern, and I don't recall exactly how I expressed it, if it was written or if it was during a meeting. But I express some concern that, to me, this feels a little bit punitive to our citizens who may be exercising their rights to peacefully protest. I do want to acknowledge that I recognize that we have to maintain and protect public safety and that we do have to be forward-thinking in how we address some of the concerns that have been brought forward over the last few months. I'm just not confident that this may be the best course of action, particularly given, and I just wanted to make sure that I went on record and stated this, particularly given the fact that we've been having conversations about public sleeping for some time now as it related to homelessness. And I think that if we're going to have this conversation, for me as an individual council member, I would want this conversation to be a bit more broad-reaching. I wouldn't want it to look like or to feel like, for me, I was making a decision in response to the most recent sleep-ins at the Market House. And so I want to just indicate that for that reason, I cannot support this particular amendment to our ordinance as presented. But thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So is there an action that you were...
Absolutely. If there's no further discussion, I would like to make a motion to deny the... To not adopt the ordinance amendment as presented this evening.
All right.
Question, sir.
Yes, sir. There's a motion by Councilmember Waddell to deny the amendment to the ordinance 6.10. There's a second by Councilmember Ingram. Discussion and Councilmember Hare.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I thought I heard the word protest when it was being explained by Councilwoman Waddell. Is this... Because I'm not a... I don't want to support anything that can stop people from protesting. Is that... I'm just reading the stat report on it, the legislative report. I don't see that, so...
Let me go to the only person in the room with a legal degree. Ms. Attorney, I know we talked about this during our work session. I know that it is illegal to pass any legislation that prohibits protest, but can you explain what this ordinance is covering?
Mayor, that is correct. This ordinance, as drafted, would prohibit the erection and sleeping... Erection of tents and sleeping in public parks, which is currently your ordinance, would also add to Market House, and would also add the city's museums. There is no prohibition against protesting. It is just a prohibition against erecting tents and sleeping in the places that I mentioned earlier.
So the constitutional right, free speech, is not impacted in this legislation?
That's correct.
And I think Councilwoman Ingram also asked about at the work session, was this pertaining to the homeless, and I think you gave us some clarity about that, that this was nothing... When she supported it during the work session, it was a question about homelessness that you wanted cleared up, that we answered, that City Manager or Attorney answered, right?
Are you yielding the floor to me, ma'am?
I'm asking, just for some clarity.
Well, my clarity sakes were, yes, was it impacting on homelessness? The answer was no. And I am supporting Councilmember's motion because I believe that if there are concerns of council members that clearly wanted to move to the committees that we have set up to discuss in broader terms, then I think it's worth the conversation.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Waddell. We have a second by Councilwoman Ingram to deny item 6.1. So this is a negative motion, guys. So if you vote in green, that means you're voting to deny, okay? So I know we got a little mixed up on that before. So if there are no further questions, this is a motion to deny. If your vote is green, you're voting to deny. If you vote in red, then you're voting against this particular motion. Everybody got it?
Mr. Mayor, I have another... I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you provide, just as some background, a little clarity as to how this particular ordinance came before us?
I did not... I would not feel comfortable doing it. My law degree is a little rusty. I'll have to blow it off. I'm a lawyer until about 6 o'clock in the afternoon. So, Madam Attorney, can you tell us about this ordinance here?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I don't have the specific date, but the council did hold a special meeting sometime in July in which there was a discussion about... Discussion about the camping at the Market House. And as a result of that, discussion, direction was given to me to draft the ordinance with the proposed amendment. This was then discussed at the work session, and the consensus of council at that time was to move this item forward to the night's agenda for consideration and adoption.
Okay. Does that catch it for you, Councilmember Waddell?
It does. Thank you, City Attorney.
All right. All right, Counsel. I have a motion on the floor to deny this ordinance. So green supports the denial. Red supports... Does not support the denial, okay? That's probably as simple as I could put it. Is everybody clear on... All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Who has... All right, Councilmember Waddell? It's your motion. I'm sure it's green, right? Councilmember Waddell, your vote?
She said green, sir.
Green. All right. Motion to deny fails. Those voting in favor, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, Ingram, and Waddell. Those voting opposed, Councilmembers Davis, Wright, Colvin, Jensen, Hare, Kinston. All right, Counsel, is there a motion to approve? This item was separated from the consent.
Motion to approve.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Hare to approve, item 6.1. There's a second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on this motion? This motion, of course, is to approve, all right? Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Waddell?
Red.
Red. All right, Counsel, that motion carries 8 to 1. Those voting in favor, Councilman Davis, Banks McLaughlin, Wright, Colvin, Jensen, Ingram, Hare, and Kinston. Those voting opposed, Councilmember Waddell, motion carries. All right, item 7.0 is the public forum. Public forum. This is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the council on cities, items related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you are here to speak on these items that may be on tonight's agenda under the public hearing, we ask that you reserve your comments until that public hearing. So when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you would please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. Then when you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, it means you have 30 seconds remaining. When you see the red light come on, it means your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we are unable to extend the given time. And with that being said, Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have? All right, so...
14, sir.
Counsel, I always try to make it a practice that we hear from the citizens who sign up. We've had situations to where sometimes it carries us over to 30 minutes. But with that in mind, we have 14 speakers. We would like to ask that the speakers who have signed up to speak tonight would allow... Would be mindful that they have other speakers, and we want to try to hear everyone. Although the council and its policy allocates 30 minutes for this, we ask that you please be mindful of that when speaking and allow time so that we can hear from as many of our 14 speakers as possible. With that being said, Madam Clerk, I'll look to you to call the first speaker.
Our first speaker is Mr. Kenneth Brown.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, other city officials, and special thanks to Councilman Davis. I am Mr. Kenneth Brown, the bossless of Tau Gamma Gamma Chapter, Fort Bragg, North Carolina, and we thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. We live by four cardinal principles, which are manhood, scholarship, perseverance, and uplift. And at these times that we see today, that uplift is where we live as a fraternity and as citizens in the Fayetteville community. We believe in unity and the community, and we believe in working together with our city officials on the many issues that are present today in our society. We take this opportunity very seriously because, as was addressed by Councilman Davis in the resolution, police reform, ending racism, and repurposing are items that are near and dear to us. Understanding the COVID-19 environment that we're in, we're also very concerned about return of our students to school as well, and we are definitely based in that. Mr. Mayor and city council, I want you to know that the men of Tau Gamma Gamma, Omega Psi Phi, that we are committed to working with the Fayetteville community as we have in the past and more so in the future. By this, our own member, Mr. Carter G. Woodson, responsible for Black History Week and Black History Month, that we take that near and dear to our hearts in support of a community that will work together for all people. I just would like to point out that as we have seen many actions that have taken place with the yellow movement, actions that have been taken place by the council and our own police chief, that we support full funding for our police. We support that we would have better education and community relations. And we also support that we would have additional community activities that would foster this type of relationship within our community. In closing, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for the leadership that you have provided to our city, our city council, for all that you have done and continue to do for the city of Fayetteville. And rest assured that the men of Tau Gamma Gamma are here to support you. Thank you for this time tonight.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the work that you all are doing in our community. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Ms. Laura Kane.
Hello, Ms. Kane. Can you hear us?
Okay, my name is Laura Kane, and I live at 3405D Christa Kate Place, an apartment complex called Millstone Landing. This apartment complex is right on the border of Fayetteville and Hope Mills. I technically live in Hope Mills physically, but my mailing address says Fayetteville. Currently, there is no access to bus service because I have been told that bus service does not, quote, "go out that far," unquote. I am told that I live less than two miles from a bus stop. I have also been told I live an eighth of a mile from a bus stop, and I've been told I live a mile from a bus stop. I have no idea where the bus stop is or where to find it or how to get on it. To continue, when I moved from Clinton to Fayetteville to escape an abuser. I was hopeful that I would get on Fayetteville Transit so I would not need a car. So far, I had been using Cumberland County Transportation, which I find difficult to access. And I can only use the service twice a week. If I can ever find a job here now, having that service two days a week is impractical. And now they're adding other stipulations that make it even more difficult to access. I am asking that you extend bus service and fast paratransit to my apartment complex. Because I still believe I live in Fayetteville and would like to use some of those benefits. I think it would open a whole new world to me as a resident and to other people who live in our apartment complex. And I would appreciate your cooperation in order to get this task accomplished. I am willing to do whatever I need to do to make this become a reality, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you give me your address again? Cause we, we would love to have you in Fayetteville. Can I get your address again? Let me find out exactly what's the, what's the closest uh?
Three, four, zero, five, D, Krista Kate Place. I live behind the movie theater.
Chris, oh, okay. My, Millstone?
Millstone Landing.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's definitely Hope Mills, okay. Okay, well, um, I think some things are being worked on, but thank you so much for your comments tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Mister Michael Flowers.
Mister Flowers, can you hear us?
Yeah, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Welcome, sir. Can you please state your name and address?
My name is Michael Flowers. I'm at uh, four nine five five, um, Britton Court. And I'm here to voice my opposition to the face mask policy. And it's because I believe that we're living through a major hysteria right now. If you haven't noticed, the flaws and the inaccuracies in the projected deaths, the flaws in the testing procedures. And the highly inflated number of cases, it's probably because you're either willingly ignorant or too obtuse to figure it out. What's going on, I think, is, is quite complex. I think there has something to do with the economy and, and people who would like to see it imploded. And uh, revamped and turned into something else. And then they're using the, the COVID virus as a pretext for that. Um, but the measures have been imposed on us over the last several months. Social distancing, the masks, the obsessive hand washing, the economic lockdowns and so forth. And they're not based on good science. The early projections about some two million people dying, which put the whole country into a state of fear. And provided the basis for the lockdowns, turned out to have been flawed methodologically and wildly inaccurate. And yet we're still living as if those projections were accurate. So the masks have been imposed on us by the governor, and I believe by the mayor. Uh, school administrators, employers, et cetera. In some countries, people are being fined and even threatened with imprisonment for not wearing a mask. And meanwhile, countries like Australia and Great Britain have gone fully fascist. And, you know, everybody, I recall earlier, uh, everybody is so concerned about Trump being a fascist. Then when he actually became one, everybody thought, oh, that's fine, I think he should actually become more of a fascist. Um, there are lots of documentation on, on YouTube. You can see a video by Ted Noel, who shows that the aerosol crystals, when you, when you use vaping material. The aerosol crystals in the vaping fumes are actually bigger in size than the COVID virus. And they just go right through and right all around the face masks. So it's clear that the face masks don't do anything. Fauci, Anthony Fauci, back in the spring, he even admitted that the face masks don't do anything. But then more recently, when everything kind of changed, he said, oh, that was, we were just lying about that. Because we don't want everybody to use all the face masks that the people working in medical facilities would have them. I'm almost out of time, but let me just refer you to some, some studies. Uh, you can find them on the Corbett Report, the Last American Vega Bond, Spiro. Um, these are some content creators on uh, BitChute and on uh, YouTube. Some of them have been banned off of uh.
Thank you, sir. Mister Flowers, we appreciate it. And uh, the face mask requirement is a governor's order, uh, not, not the mayor's order, so. Thank you, but thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Miss Dawn Atkins Hurley.
Miss Hurley, are you there with us? Okay, alright, Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mister Jack Smith.
Mister Smith, are you with us? Mister Smith, can you hear us?
We don't have him on.
Okay.
Okay, our next speaker is Mister Michael Pinkston.
Mister Pinkston, are you there? Mister Pinkston, can you hear us? Mister Pinkston, can you hear us? Mister Pinkston? Okay, alright.
Our next speaker signed up is Miss Parker Lindsay.
Uh, Miss Lindsay, are you there? Miss Lindsay? Brooke, do you have everybody connected?
I'm looking for Miss Lindsay right now, sir, and I do not believe that she's in there either.
Okay.
Okay, next speaker, Mister Robert Walls.
You see Mister Walls on? Mister Walls, can you hear us? Do we have anybody on here?
The next speaker signed up is Miss Denine Etienne.
Miss Denine, are you there? Brooke, are we connected?
We are connected, sir, they're just not dialed in.
Who, who's on the line?
I'm going through the list right now, Roy Martin is the next one on the list that's here right now, sir.
Okay, well, Madam Clerk, you can call him.
Mister Roy Martin?
Well, no, 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 I mean, just call him in the order that you have.
Oh, he was saying that's one.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, it's Roy Martin.
Oh, okay. Mister Martin, how are you, sir? Please, please state your name and your address for us.
No, it's, it's been a long day for a Monday.
Yes, sir.
My name is Roy Martin. I live at fifty-nine hundred Welford Place, two eight three zero four. In the Aaron Lakes uh, subdivision. Uh, please forgive my ignorance of protocol uh, and procedure. This is my first time calling in.
You're doing a fantastic job, but you have the floor.
Thanks, sir. Um, I'm calling because uh, I've uh, in reference to the market house. Um, I understand that uh, due to recent situations throughout the nation, uh, which is very sad. But uh, now people are starting to burn bibles. So I'd, I'd like to re, re uh, to relate here. That uh, Heinrich Heine seventeen nine, uh, sorry, seventeen ninety-seven to eighteen fifty-six. He stated that where they burned books, soon they were burning bodies. For the society, Edmund Burke said that we had, um, sorry, I've got an eye infection, so my vision is slightly blurred. Um, Edmund Burke said that there's a partnership between dead and the living, and the unborn. We owe it to the dead and the unborn to tell the truth through the Confederate statues. And to the, to tell the truth about Jefferson's Club of Clay. For the same reason, we also owe it to the dead and to the unborn to protect the symbols of history and liberty. If we fail to, if we, sorry, if we fail, other symbols of liberty, uh, other fables. Sorry, other fa- other symbols of lib- of liberal, well, would be placed in their statue, it would be placed in their s- uh, situation. We owe it to the fa- the fair reckoning. We also owe the future to the fair chance of arriving at own, at uh, their own reckoning. We simply destroy the evidence, we impoverish our heirs' understanding. Nineteen eighty-four, awesome well-stated, every record has been destroyed or falsified. Every book has been rewritten, every picture's been repainted, every statue, street, and building has been re- renamed. Every date has been re- had been altered. And this, the process is continuing day by day, minute by minute. History has stopped, nothing will ever be the same, and everything will be as it is with the people that are now in charge. Okay, uh, if we destroy, if we take down the market house, if we destroy the symbols of history. Whether we love history or not, not everything in history is to my favor. Uh, there's things that I would like to have changed. However, the statue is there because if we destroy history, we have no future. And we must, we must maintain history as it is, as much as it is, as much as it is disliked by the people that are here today. Because the future.
Thank you so much, sir. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Miss Jackie Taylor.
Uh, Miss Taylor, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Great, can you state your home address and your name?
May I just quick say that I have three other speakers here with me that are having technical difficulties?
Sure, they're gonna share your time? Or were they speakers that we called previous?
They were.
Okay, who, who are they?
Michael, Dawn, and Parker.
Okay, so will they use your phone to speak?
That would be fine.
Alright, can y'all start her time over for me? Alright, can you state your name and your ad- address for us, please?
My name is Jackie Taylor. I'm at ten forty Old Vander Road in Fayetteville, North Carolina. I am the repu- the Cumberland County Republican Party Chairman. The Cumberland County Republican Party has adopted the following resolution in support of preserving the landmark Fayetteville Market House. Whereas, the Fayetteville Market House was built in eighteen thirty-two. And after the great fire, destroyed much of the town and replaced a previous building on the same site that housed the North Carolina State Legislature. Whereas, the Fayetteville Market House has architectural significance as an example of an English hall similar to the historic. Faneuil Hall in Boston, Massachusetts, and the City Market in Charleston, South Carolina. Has earned a place as a national historic landmark and functioned as a library. The Town Hall and Mayor's Office above until nineteen oh six, and as a market space below until nineteen oh seven. Whereas, Thomas Grimes, a free black man supervised construction of the Market House. And whereas, the Market House site has great historical significance to the city as the site of. A speech from its balcony by the Marquis de Lafayette, after whom the city is named. And has continued to serve our city for nearly two hundred years. And whereas, the Market House site has a great historical significance to the city and the state of North Carolina. Whereas, the open arcade on the ground level of the Market House served as a general marketplace for the community. And was used to sell and buy fruits and vegetables. Whereas, copies of old newspapers contained advertising for estate and debt auctions. That included the sale of enslaved persons that would take place in and around the Market House. As well as on the courthouse steps and at businesses, business locations within the town. And have caused them to mistakenly believe that the Market House was solely used as a market, slave market during its early years. And whereas, the significance of the Market House in our community is far greater. Than its brief and infrequent use for auctions that included enslaved persons. And whereas, the Market House is a monument to the history of our city. As an important place in the founding of our country and state. And whereas, the Market House serves as a reminder to young and old. That slavery is wrong and will not repeat itself for lack of knowledge. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Cumberland County Republican Party. That we believe the Fayetteville Market House is a significant reminder of the positive contributions of our community. To the state of North Carolina and the United States of America. And should be preserved on its present historical site at the center of our city. As a reminder of the good and worthy foundations laid by our community for current and future generations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, uh, she gave us three names that, that we had called, I think, I know one was Michael Pinkston, who were the others?
Uh, Miss Parker Lindsay.
Okay.
Um, and uh, Miss Dawn Hurley.
Okay, is she still on the line, Brooke? Okay, can uh, you have, I guess, Miss, uh, what order were they supposed to be in?
Uh, the first one was Miss Dawn Atkins Hurley.
It, Miss Dawn Hurley?
That's me.
Alright, how you doing? Can you state your name and address for us?
I'm Dawn Atkins Hurley, and I'm a proud Fayetteville native. Please indulge this brief history of the Market House. Seventeen eighty-nine, Fayetteville was the state capital. The state house was the site of the ratification of the US Constitution. And the General Assembly chartered the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, one of the oldest universities in the nation. Eighteen ninety-five, General Lafayette spoke on the balcony of the state house. Eighteen thirty-one, the great fire destroyed the state house and much of downtown Fayetteville. Eighteen thirty-two, the Market House was built on the site of the old state house. Thomas Grimes, a free black mason, along with other free black artisans, helped build the Market House. The open-air first floor functioned as a marketplace, and the second floor as a town hall. The Market House continued to function as a social, economic, and government center of town. At nineteen oh seven, after an attempt to demolish the Market House, the Women's Civic Improvement Association took over management. They began what was one of the first recorded historic preservation moments in North Carolina. Plumbing and electricity was installed. Nineteen fourteen, the first public library was established on the upper floor. Nineteen sixteen, the first public health service been operating out of the Market House. Nineteen nineteen, the Red Cross opened the First Soldier Civilian Center on the lower level. Nineteen twenty-four to nineteen twenty-six, the National Bank operated on the lower level. In nineteen forty-five, a petition to remove the Market House failed, and the Market House was renovated. Nineteen fifty-two, the library moved and the Chamber of Commerce moved into the second floor. Nineteen sixty-five, another renovation and the Market Square Beautification Incorporated moved into the second floor. Nineteen seventy-one to nineteen seventy-eight, the Market House was the first home of the Fayetteville Museum of Art. In nineteen seventy-nine, the Old Fayetteville Association moved into the second floor. In two thousand twelve, to the second great fire. The Market House Square Museum was located on the second floor. Displaying local artifacts from seventeen eighty-eight to present. This Market House has been the background of my life. From watching Christmas parades on the Market House steps as a child. To saluting flags at the Veterans Day play with heart, with pride in my heart and tears in my eyes. The Dogwood Festival, the International Folk Festivals, the Dickens Holiday, the drum circles under the Market House arches. This building is hallowed ground. This Market House has been the center and the heart of our proud city. If you think you can rip the soul out of this city, please open the blinds and see the voice that says you can't.
Thank you, ma'am.
Are you gonna open the blinds?
The blinds been open since we started the meeting.
Okay, have you looked out?
Yeah, yes, we, we, we've been watching. Yes, ma'am. We see you.
Thank you.
Alright, Madam Clerk, who's your next speaker?
Our next speaker is Mister Michael Pinkston.
Mister Pinkston?
Good evening, Mister Mayor.
Hi, sir, can you state your address for us?
Um, concerned Fayetteville citizen.
Okay. Alright.
Good evening, Mister Mayor and councilmembers. We are in a war, a war that threatens our very way of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Terrorists have looted our monuments of the past, have disrespected the rule of law. Looted and burned our sacred places, and have issued demands of a well-ordered society. If this is not anarchy and terror, I don't know what is. My sacred duty as a citizen of this great city is to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States. From all enemies, foreign and domestic, so help me God. I will not let a bunch of terrorists dictate anything, much less tell me that they will burn down the Market House, not on my watch. The Constitution of the United States, along with all the amendments, was signed on the Market House on November the twenty-first, seventeen eighty-nine. It serves as the state house for a few years, and was a close contender for the state capital. The grounds upon which the Market House stand is holy ground, stained with the blood of patriots and heroes. That paid the price with their lives in order that we might have the blessings of a free society. in order that we might have the blessings of a free society. Barring the fact that the Market House was a designated national historical site in 1973 and is protected by the federal government, the Market House is the heart of the city. All one has to do is to look around, and you can see that the city of Fayetteville has grown up around the Market House. The Market House is the heart of this great city. And if you rip the heart out of the city, it will die. The Market House represents a proud and honorable history of freedom from oppression, tyranny, and is the symbol of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for all. To destroy the Market House would be like surrendering to Cornwallis. Years from now, people will look back upon this moment. They will see whether or not our city's leadership was strong and their resolution to bring back law and order in the city of Fayetteville, or whether or not they will, and with no resolution of strength or conviction, cower to terrorists and mob tastics. We save the Market House, we save the city, we save ourselves. We surrender the Market House, we lose the city. You cannot give an inch of ground to the terrorist who will take a mile. Members of this council, you must ratify your strength. You must, your strength of character and your purpose to defend the Constitution of the United States of America with all your might. If you give in to the demands of terrorists, then you are no better than the terrorist. If you march with terrorists, you are not to be trusted. If you lack moral courage to stand against the mob and lawlessness, terrorists will step down and take you over. I urge you to put an end to this once and for all and save the Market House. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Parker Lindsay.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Ye, yes, ma'am. Can you state your name and address for us, Ms. Lindsay?
Yes, I will. My name is Parker Lindsay, Parker, first name, Lindsay, last name, 515 Argyle Road, Fayetteville. Fayetteville is not in a good place now. There is a chasm. There is a need for healing. In an email Mayor Colvin sent to me, he mentioned the need for compromise. Yes, we need to reach a compromise regarding the Market House. Compromise is an agreement or settlement of a dispute that is reached by each side making concessions. I will speak of community. Community, a feeling of fellowship with others as a result of sharing common attitudes, interests, and goals. I feel the Market House should be a place of community. Fayetteville is a community of many, many ethnic groups, many voices. And the loudest voices have the responsibility to listen. We all need to listen to each other. I sent Mayor Colvin and my city council representative, Mr. Dawkins, an email naming three towns that have used their Market House in a community way. I suggest a committee made up of citizens to explore this. Some considerations of use of the Market House to incorporate community and compromise would be music, art exhibits, parties, receptions, possibly food, and possibly a fee or fees for upkeep that would be affordable to all. In conclusion, as I stated earlier, there is a dire need for healing in Fayetteville. When a decision regarding the Market House is made, I hope the definition of compromise and the concept of community is used in this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Iman Iranami Mohammed Smith.
Honorable Minister. Greetings, everyone. God's feast upon y'all. So alaikum. This is Iman Iranami Mohammed here. Born, raised in Fayetteville. Very proud to be of Fayetteville, the ville, as we call it, since we got so many of the negative things that have gone in the past. We are in a position now that God has blessed us to be in. We have so much tremendous progress, a brand-new baseball stadium built downtown Fayetteville, all over Hay Street, all over the city of Fayetteville. People around the country talking about our baseball stadium coming around the country to see baseball in Fayetteville. And the new transportation hub is already built, better than Charlotte, Raleigh, Greensboro, you name it. And so we have many tremendous things that are going on. 700 new apartments already built on Wilmington Road, brand-new. And these things are held up and started by a black American, the one that you're listening to, Fayetteville State University of Brooklyn. So we need to learn how to accept the great things that God has blessed us with. All we're talking about is what God has allowed us to do. Now, if God allows you to do something that is wrong, God gives you rope so you can hang yourself and end up in hell fire. Now, if God allows you to do something that is good, He's helping you get into heaven. So we want to learn how to have a conversation talking about scripture. We're not talking about what man wrote, we're talking about what the prophets wrote. So here we are now with a police chief who is one of the most wonderful, best police chiefs in the entire United States of America, and she's doing a tremendous, great job with community policing. And we need all those that are listening tonight to know, once God bless you with great things, you have a detective. So our new police chief, Ms. Hawkins, is tremendous, and we need community policing and people to go to her and call her as she asks us to do on WIDU radio station. And that radio station, WIDU, needs to give her the citizens, and don't take up too much time listening to the order of the radio station. Citizens of Fayetteville, the citizens of Fayetteville want to talk to our leaders. You have around you, Mr. Mayor, a tremendous team. Uh, City Attorney, uh, Ms. McDonald, one of the best in the United States, and the city manager, one of the best in the country. So here we are with a, uh, with a, a sheriff, just right. We are, we're blessed, and we need to learn how to stop complaining so much. Many of our parents taught us as children, you see. When the prophets went to heaven, they took all the excuses back to heaven with, "Stop complaining," all these excuses. And if you, if you really want to know if you're doing right, help somebody who don't look like you. I was downtown earlier today, and I was so impressed when I saw a young African-American man, like, he's about 22-years-old, come past me. I've seen him before, and he would come by and smile. And he's seen me downtown before, and he would do some of what he saw me to do. He would pick up, uh...
Honorable, thank you so much for those wise words. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Sean McMillan.
Mr. McMillan?
Good evening, Council. Sean McMillan, 6024 Golden Rain Drive. Who am I? When I resisted police detainment, four officers used their force to subdue me. On both my death investigation and autopsy, the manner of death is declared to be homicide. My autopsy shows that I suffer from deep scalp hemorrhage, contusions, and abrasions covering my upper and lower body. My right third and fourth ribs were fractured with associated soft tissue hemorrhage, as were my right fifth rib, my right sixth through eighth ribs, and my left third through seventh ribs, all broken. Many of you attended George Floyd's funeral. You mourned his death publicly, and he deserved that. His life mattered. But like him, physical stress and the prone position were factors in my death. Many of you publicly denounced the Minneapolis Police Department for the murder of George Floyd, but you cannot even form your lips to say my name or investigate the local police involved. I died here in Fayetteville on September 18th, 2019, while in the custody of the Fayetteville Police Department. Did my life matter? My name is Joshua Oxendine. Say his name. Joshua Oxendine. I request the convening of a special meeting of the council to discuss the facts and circumstances, not only of the homicide of Joshua Oxendine, but the subsequent 11-month-long cover-up that followed. We urge the council to pass a resolution that demands justice along with divulgement of all 911 transcripts, eyes on all associated dash cam and body cam footage, examination of the SBI report of investigation, and examination of all text and emails regarding the homicide of Joshua Oxendine over the last 11 months. Should the facts support it, bring criminal charges up on the perpetrators of this homicide. Momentarily, each council member will receive in your inbox a digital copy of the medical examiner's death investigation report and the autopsy. We're requesting the immediate resignation of Chief Gina Hawkins. Chief Hawkins chose to keep the secret. She chose the easy wrong of cover-up rather than the hard right of transparency. The cover-up of, of the homicide of Joshua Oxendine is a clear indicator of Chief Hawkins' lack of integrity, lack of intestinal fortitude, and stands as an egregious breach of public trust and confidence. Send a clear message to Chief Hawkins and all the people of Fayetteville who depend on your leadership that this type of bad news does not get better with time. The community needs you to affirm unequivocally that Joshua Oxendine's life mattered. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our final speaker is Councilmember Ingram.
Who?
Councilmember Ingram, District 2.
Please state your name and address, ma'am. All right, Councilmember Ingram.
Uh, Shakila Ingram, 1822 Camden Row. Mayor, council, I stand before you today to express concern for the communities that I not only represent, but communities that I spend time with, to speak to you for them. Our B Street community has been offered promises prior to my existence as it relates to our corridor revitalization efforts, and feel that our magnified focus on Murchison Road Corridor gives them fear that revitalization may not come to fruition for them. And they are asking, and as I stand with them and will do what's in my power, that we not let our commu, community fall to an empty promise. The Habitat Homes have been such a blessing, but that will not fully do the job of blight due to unkept lots and properties, drug use, prostitution, and gun violence. Our Windsor Terrace, Evans Hill, Brookwood, and Orange Street Circle community have shown great concerns that the Homeless Day Center, though we support, are proposed to be nestled into their community. And we are asking that the council consider locations that are in majority settings of commercial, um, as these communities have also fallen victim to drug houses, illegal dumping, and gun violence. We understand the operation inasmuch, and the Health Department are near, but we also believe that the homeless community, um, may not fall to some occurrences that lead to homelessness and will help curb certain behaviors if set in majority commercial setting. Finally, as we begin to forward our conversations surrounding Parks and Rec, bond money usage, and looking at public safety needs, I want to bring more awareness to communities such as East of the River who have been asking for a community center since before I was born, and a new fire station that could support a community flex space, if not a standalone community center. All of these concerns cater to our residents' safety and comfortability of living in their homes and this city. Mayor, council, I stand with my residents and their concerns. As I stated before, I will do what's in my power to ensure that we deliver, and I hope you join us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
Right. Thank all of our speakers tonight for the public forum. It's time we will move into our public hearings. Individuals, well, let's see, we've got three in a row. Uh, council, we're right at almost 90 minutes. Let's take about a, uh, take about 10-minute break and, uh, we'll, we'll get started on our public hearing shortly after. I will call our meeting back to order. Public hearing, item eight point zero, uh, did I read the pub- no, all right. Public hearing, individuals designed to speak at the public hearings must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before seven PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed, uh, for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individuals will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. When a city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, means you have thirty seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. At this time, I'll go to Ms. Keisha.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. The city received a petition to close a portion, the unopened portion of Danish Drive in June. On June twenty-second, City Council set the public hearing for tonight. The North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash two ninety-nine gives this, gives the city the authority to do that and also dictates the procedure for which we have to follow to go through with that. Our traffic engineer performed a traffic analysis study which determined that there would be no significant impact if the closure is approved. Staff also contacted the Police Department, EMS, and the Fire Department. All indicated that there would be no impact to their services as this portion of the road that is subject to be closed has never been built and is not open. The utility companies were also contacted just to make sure if there are any utilities in the road that we reserved those rights for them. PWC was the only one that did respond and asked that we reserved an easement if we do close the road. Staff posted the property, sent certified letters to the adjacent property owners, and published it in the paper for four consecutive weeks, notice of this public hearing to give everyone time to sign up if they had any issues with it, and that's basically everything. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
No, ma'am. So with that, we will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Mayor, we have no speakers for this item.
With that, we will close the public hearing. All right, uh, Council, any questions for Ms. Keisha on item eight point zero two, uh, what, I'm sorry, on eight point zero one, closing of Danish Drive? Uh, Councilman Davis or Councilman Davis then here.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ms. Keisha, um, so the purpose of this closing is, uh, residential development?
Yes, they are proposing to, the same owner owns both sides of the road, and he is proposing to put a townhome multi-family development.
What district is again?
I'm sorry?
The location is... Okay. Got it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Cal-, uh, Councilman Hare?
Mayor, I was going to make a motion, but I'll leave that to the Chairwoman of District Eight.
Okay. All right, he gives the floor to, uh, Councilwoman Banks McGlaughlin if you...
Well, I do have a question. Is it possible to push it out? Push this item out? I know that we don't have any speakers at the moment. I know, um, in the past, one of the issues was, um, that a lot of the residents weren't aware. Is that the only way that we push out the information as far as the paper for what, four week, four consecutive weeks?
Um, if, yeah, we, no, we posted the property too. So on both ends of the property, we physically went out and put signs with the map that showed the closing.
And the name, just that street, that one particular street?
Yeah, and I have had, no, I have had a couple of them call and ask me about it, but they weren't, their main concern was just that the stormwater wasn't going to be affected. In the case, as I told them, actually what will happen is when this development is done, the stormwater will be, he will have to develop stormwater that would, would help. So, um, I didn't have any...
Okay, that was my thing, just making sure that they were aware the neighborhood. Okay, okay.
Uh, Councilwoman Wright, you have a question?
Yes, just commenting on it. Uh, it would have to come back to council anyway for a vote when these, um, when the building process and everything starts for approval. Is that right?
I'm not exactly sure if they have to plan...
No, that's especially as proven as granted.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Council, we need action on this item. Eight point zero one.
Eight point zero one. It was to consider the closing for the portion of Danish Drive.
Yes, I make a motion that we go ahead and close the, um, area on Danish Drive.
Second. All right, so this is a motion to approve, uh, consideration for the closing of, uh, the portion of Danish Drive as presented as a second by Councilmember, uh, Hare, who would ask if you could please use your light so I can catch you, sir. I've got Larry over here, uh, you know, I had to press my light, so. All right. So, uh, Council, any other questions? Hold on, y'all are voting. Uh, any other questions on the motion? Is that a vote? All right, hold on. Quick on the trigger this. Council, questions? No. Okay, let's click. Wait a minute. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry, I do have a question. In the future, is there a way, um, to notify the council member, uh, particularly what district it is? I mean, by that being my district, is it a way that you guys can send over so that I can be aware of it ahead of time?
I will do that. When we came in June, we had it on the council action memo, what district it was to set the public hearing, but I can make sure that I do that personally.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll be happy to do that.
It's on the camera. Okay. All right, Council? Uh, y'all have been eager to vote, so if no other questions, look to you for your vote on this motion. Uh, Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Keisha. All right, item eight point zero two. Um, request for special use permit to allow paint and body shop from automotive's part Zona CC.
That's a good one.
Hello?
Hey, do good work.
And Madam Clerk, is this a special use permit?
Yes, sir, it is, and we just have one speaker for this item.
Okay.
Mister Edgar Quinones.
Okay, and at which time just notify him to be sworn in. Thank you.
Good evening, um, I'm Jennifer Baptiste, Senior Planner in Development Services. This is case number, um, P twenty dash zero nine F. The request is to issue a special use permit for a paint and auto body shop, um, to be located at three five zero East Russell Street. Currently, the property is split zoned between community commercial and heavy industrial. The applicant is Edgar Kionas, and the owner of the property is Jimmy and Mary Fan and William and Catherine Fan. This is the aerial, uh, aerial photo of the property. The property is highlighted here in crosshatched in yellow. To give you a little idea of where this property is located, this is the county court, um, Cumberland County Courthouse, and Bill's, the Bell, um, Seeds Store is right approximately here, and directly across the street is the Cape Fear Farm Credit. The property is currently, um, split zoned with community commercial in the front as well as, um, high industrial in, heavy industrial in the rear. According to the land use map, this area should be used as, um, downtown. According to the future land use map, downtown is, um, represented as an intense commercial, retail, and service area. This building was originally constructed in the late nineteen nineties. According to the ordinance, an automotive paint and body shop requires an S U P, um, approval within the community commercial zoning district. The site is approximately point six three acres with the building, um, being approximately five thousand five hundred, five hundred square feet. This portion of the building is a typical storefront portion, um, storefront, while this portion of the building is general, has been used in the past and will be used by the applicant as the automotive repair, um, site. The adjacent properties are to the north, uh, the, um, farm, the Cape Fear Farm Credit, as well as a home care center across the street. Um, to the south and to the east is a vacant parcel and a warehouse to the rear. Um, to the east are additional automotive, um, parts, um, stores. As you can see from the proposed site plan submitted by the applicant, this area is the main area that was, that's the original storefront, that this area will be used as, um, office as well as, um, customer service area. And the little inlet portion off to the side, this is where he will locate his spray paint booth as well as do the automotive, um, repairs. According to the, um, to the U D O, the development conditions for automotive, um, paint shops, um, in the district, this use shall be located at least two hundred and fifty feet from any residential building, educational facility, or childcare center. Vehicles shall not be parked as a source of parts or for sale or, or lease or rent. The repair and storage of all vehicles shall occur within an enclosed building, and vehicles that are repaired or are waiting removal can, shall not be stored or parked for more than thirty consecutive days. The zoning commission and planning staff are recommending approval of the S U P as the S U P implements and the policies adopted by the Unified Development Ordinance. The expansion of this use is allowed in the com- um, Community Commercial Zoning District, and the S U P ensures that new development is compatible with the twenty-ten land use plan, as well as, there are no other factors that are substanti- that will substantially affect the public health, safety, or general welfare. Are there any questions of staff at this time?
Yes, ma'am, we do. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Jensen? Okay, Councilwoman Kinson, I didn't know who was first. Councilwoman Kinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one question. On the, um, item number five, subject property, out beside the area that is going to be used for repair, there's a fence there. Are they going to need to widen or do anything with the fence?
That's a question best asked for the applicant. The applicant is here, um, to a- answer any questions, um, so he would, he would be able to tell you whether he would need to expand that fenced-in area.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you. As I'm looking at the picture of the way it is right now, I, it is not rented right now, correct? It is not in service?
No, ma'am. The last renter was approximately in the mid-two thousand, and that was a Napa Autos, Auto Parts store.
Okay, so what I'm understanding is this property has been vacant for, for twenty years? If you said two, did you tell me two thousand? Did I have it?
Yeah, the late mid-two thousands, yes. So probably maybe around like two thousand five, two thousand eight.
So we're talking fifteen years this building has? And my understanding that I'm hearing from you is the tenant is willing to go in and he is renting the business to start a new business in this?
Actually, he operates a, another, um, automotive, um, repair shop on, um, Salt Rayford Road, so he is going to be moving that facility into this facility.
Okay, so a vacant building, he is going to, um, go in and renovate a building that has been vacant for fifteen years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any questions, other questions?
Um, don't think so with, um, uh, Councilwoman Kinson, I guess, well, he, he's been sworn in?
No, sir. I need to swear amen.
Okay, all right. Don't get too far, I'm sure we'll have something, okay? All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you can call. Now, does he need, how does, how does he need to be sworn in with the social distancing?
Right, if, sir, if you could raise your right hand, please? And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
All right, welcome, sir.
Mayor, and we have no time constraints for this, this item.
Okay. All right, sir, uh, would you like to, are you here to, uh, would you like to speak on behalf of it, or would you, are you just here to answer any council question?
Yeah, just here to answer any questions.
Yeah, just here to answer any questions.
So Council, uh, Member Kinston, you had a question for this gentleman?
Yes, mayor. The question I have is, on the picture, it shows that there's a fencing to the back of the building.
Right.
My question is, are you going to need to expand that fencing?
No, ma'am. It's, it's pretty big back there. I don't have to do anything back there to the fencing.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, uh, I know she's in most of the motion. Any, any other questions prior to that? Alright, so, uh, with that, I guess we will close the public hearing. Uh, Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I li- I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, special use permit with any conditions listed above.
Uh, it's a motion by Councilmember Ingram, it's a second by Councilmember Wright, uh, to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Alright, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Uh, Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
Alright, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous, nine to one. Uh, motion carries. Good luck to you, sir. Alright.
I'm sorry, mayor, did you say nine zero or nine one?
Nine zero.
Okay.
Pardon me. Usually when I see nine green lights, that means it's one red, but...
Right, and that's why I wanted to clarify.
Thank you for catching my math, Attorney McDonald. Publicly saying I can't add. Nine to zero. Alright, eight, eight points, eight point zero three, uh, Mr. Harmon, where you been, man?
I've missed y'all.
You sound real sincere.
Oh, I have. It's good to be, uh, back here in front of, you know, live and, and seeing people again, you know?
Well, good to see you.
Let's see here. Am I live, or is it, is it ready? So the next case we have before you is P- Okay. That one. Okay. So the next case before you is P twenty oh nine F, and this is a property, I'm sorry, that's the one we just did.
I was about to say, didn't we already take care of that?
It reset itself when, uh, uh, P twenty thirteen F.
Okay, alright.
Um, and this is the reissuing of a special use permit for a cellular communications tower. Uh, in October of eighteen, two thousand eighteen, uh, the same applicant, Beasley Media Group, came before city council, was approved for tower. Uh, as you know, with the special use permits, if no building permits are applied for within a year, uh, those permits are no longer valid. And that's what happened in this case. Uh, they weren't ready to build the tower. Um, they've come back at this point, they are ready to build the tower. They've actually already, just kind of on good faith, they've already submitted all the building plans and everything. So if this is approved tonight, they basically can, can get their, uh, per- building permits for it tomorrow if they want. Um, but this is located eighteen seventy-six Bureau Drive, uh, which is just off of Cedar Creek Road. Uh, the building in question, uh, where the tower is originally, I believe, was, uh, built for the, the SBI's local, uh, branch, and they moved out some years ago, and now, uh, Beasley Media Group, uh, run some stuff out of there. Um, just to give you an idea of where the property is, um, again, Cedar Creek Road, this is right before it gets to the interstate. Uh, this is the Holiday Inn here. Uh, and you've got, uh, I believe this is a Ruby Tuesdays right in front of it. All of this farmland, uh, that you see kinda to both sides and behind it is all still in the county's jurisdiction. Uh, zoning, it is, uh, everything in red is community commercial, so that is one of our districts that does allow the towers. Uh, our new land use plan calls for highway commercial, uh, on this particular property. So everything still lines up. This is how the, the property, uh, in question looks currently. The second picture down here to the right, uh, the tower would be, uh, back in here where my arrow is, behind the building. Um, again, uh, to the south and west of the property is just wooded farmland. Uh, you've got Cedar Creek Road out here, and then you've got the Holiday Inn as well. Um, all of the plans, everything that they're submitting are exactly the same as what were approved back in two thousand eighteen. They've made no changes. Um, it would be, um, a lattice-type triangular tower, um, which is a little stronger tower than the typical monopole that we, we approved mainly around here. Um, and then here are a few, uh, photo simulations of what the tower would look like. Um, again, this is from the Ruby Tuesdays. This is, uh, from the Holiday Inn's parking lot, and you can see it here in the background. And then, uh, traveling down Cedar Creek Road, you can see it, uh, back here in the background as well. Um, the zoning commission and staff, uh, recommend conditions that they comply with the attached site plan, final approval of TRC, all the typical things we normally do. Uh, zoning commission and staff, uh, both have once again recommended approval for this project. And, uh, staff will be available for any questions after your open republic hearing.
Thank you, sir. Alright, uh, Madam Clerk, we have any speakers?
Mayor, we just have one speaker in opposition, Mr. Joe Riddle.
Alright.
I don't believe that he's here, and I think he-
I did not see him either.
I think he signed up for the wrong thing. He is actually on our zoning commission docket for property tomorrow night, so...
Oh, okay. And I, I have no further speakers, ma'am.
So that will open and close, uh, the public hearing on this item. Uh, Councilman Wright?
Uh, yes, just have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
This tower is a communication tower.
Yes.
Um, the safety factors on, on this, um, what are those type of, uh, factors, and, and is it anything dealing with, that can affect the human, uh, human being's safety?
I'm gonna just, I'm gonna back up to this, to one of these right here, well, actually, to right here, where you can actually see the, the buildings in here. They're actually, the, the only safety concern is for their own buildings. Um, again, this is a, a, a three-sided lattice tower, so it's a lot stronger than the normal ones. But it will actually sit right here, kinda in the corner of these two buildings. And so if it goes in any other direction, it's just gonna go into vacant farmland. Um, their buildings are the only buildings that could possibly be affected by it.
What, what's the difference in this tower and maybe a five G tower?
Uh, the tower itself, there's not a difference. It, the, the different, the four G, five G, all is the antennas that go on the tower, and those are individual antennas.
Mm-hmm, and this, this having nothing to do with four G or five G, it's a different type of-
No, again, this, this was actually approved and came to us the first time in two thousand eighteen. Um, and it's Beasley Broadcasting. It's really more for their broadcasting purposes than cell, normal cell tower, uh, stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, Councilman Hare?
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Harmon, um, will this tower be able to, let me see if I'm gonna use the technical word correctly, um, co-locations?
Yeah, that's one of the-
On this tower?
It's one of the requirements of our ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, sir.
We don't allow people to just build a single-use tower.
Right, right, right. Thank you, thank you, uh, mayor.
Alright, uh, Councilmember Ingram?
Um, yes, mayor, um, I am prepared to make a motion, but I also have a quick question.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Harmon, it is?
Yeah.
Yes. Is that, can you remind me of how tall this tower is?
Oh, let's see.
A hundred and seventy-five feet, wasn't it? Thought that was-
I couldn't find it on my page.
Yeah, I know what's in there, and I-
It's above a hundred, correct?
It is, and it's under a hundred and ninety-nine.
Okay.
You have different regulations for, uh, the FAA when it gets to those heights.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Colvin. I'm prepared.
Don't have that-
Nope, you're fine, you're fine.
Right in my memory.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I am prepared to make a motion.
One, one ninety-five, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Alright, yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this, uh, special use permit with any conditions listed above.
I think we, uh, from lessons we've learned in the past, we've probably gotta restate, uh, with the eight findings of facts, do we need to include all that, Karen?
You incorporate those into the motion?
Yeah.
Mayor Colvin, um, council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special use permit, um, that support all eight findings of fact. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, okay, it's a motion by Councilmember Ingram, it's a second by Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, uh, to approve, uh, in accordance with the eight findings of facts as listed in the, uh, published agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Alright, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
Madam Clerk, that is nine to zero. Okay, unanimous by those voting tonight.
And Mayor Colvin, before we move forward, um, city manager, I'd like to ask a question as it relates to towers. As we know, that we do, we do have a tower, uh, uh, being prepared to be installed downtown, a forty-foot tower. And I guess my question is, what are the requirements as to what comes to the council? Um, uh, uh, and, and maybe you can send that in email, but I would want to know, what are the requirements as to, is it a height bearing, um, that would require a special use permit for what will come to council for a vote? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, item eight point zero four, Ms. Baptiste. You mean we let Mr. Harmon off that easy?
Yeah, you did. Good evening again, this is case number P twenty dash one nine F. The request is to allow a reduction in the required five hundred foot distance separation between warehouse, uh, warehouse storage site and residential uses. The applicant is Brian Wellborn on behalf of Eminem Smith Storage Warehouse, Inc., located at six oh one Hillsborough Street. To give you a little idea of where the property is located, this is Eminem Storage, right south of it is Operation Inasmuch, and across the street is Saint Luke AME Church. According to the zoning map, this area is zoned high industrial with, um, mixed res- mixed residential uses to the north, um, east, and west. According to the future land use map, this area should be used as an employment center. An employment center is defined as high-intensity non-residential uses with high impact. This is a picture of the subject property as it stands now. The property was originally developed in the late nineteen seventies and operates as approximately seven, seventy-five thousand square foot warehouse space. This is a warehouse storage and distribution center, um, for more commercial develop, more commercial uses, and is not used for individual rentals. The facility that the applicant is looking to build is another, um, seventy-six, seventy-six thousand five hundred square foot, um, storage center to be used, again, as for a commercial distribution center. What the special use is requesting is a reduction in the separation between the, um, between the commercial and the, um, residential uses. Not the actual, not a actual special use permit for the use of the property. To the north of the site is residential, to the south is Operation Inasmuch, to the west is the CSX Railroad Line, and to the east is another Operation Inasmuch facility, as well as Saint Luke's AME Church. As you can see from the proposed site plan, this is what the applicant is proposing to build. Again, this is not a special use permit to allow the use, but to allow a reduction that separates the use from the adjacent, um, residential uses. According to the development standards in the UDO, uses shall be located at least five hundred feet from any residential district, school, or care center. The use shall not be locate, shall not locate storage areas within any required setback. The use shall locate outdoor storage areas to the rear of the principal structure. The use shall not, shall be designed to ensure proper functioning of the site as related to, um, stacking, circulation, and turn, turning movements. And the use shall not, shall have direct access onto an arterial or major collector's street. The zoning commission and planning staff that are recommending approval of the SUP based on the proposed SUP implements the policies adopted in the Unified Development Ordinance. The expansion of the use is allowed in the heavy industrial district. And the proposed SUP ensures the new development is compatible with the land use plan, and there are no other factors which will substantially affect the public health, safety, or general welfare.
That's it?
That's it.
Alright, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers tonight?
Yes, sir, we have five. Uh, one is supposed to be calling in. Um, the first speaker is-
Well, let me open the public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
Alright, alright, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Now, the first speaker is Mr. Matthew Smith.
Is this a, a phone call, or is this Mr. Smith?
No, at least this is Mr. Smith.
Oh, okay.
No. I'm not Matthew Smith, I'm Neil Smith, the engineer. Matthew's outside.
Oh, okay, would you like to go first, sir?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I just have to swear you in, so if you would raise your right hand, please, sir.
You wanna get them all at one time? Oh, she can't do it?
Probably not, because of social distance.
Oh, okay, alright.
Do you affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, so help you God?
I, I do. Wanna go first? Anyway, again, my name, my name's Neil Smith, I'm the engineer, and, uh, Matthew Smith is the owner of the property. And, uh, so I just wanted to explain a little bit about what's going on. Mr. Smith has been, and we're, we're no relation. It's just, there's a lot of Smiths running. Uh, Neil Smith in, uh, Southern Pines, North Carolina. And, um, so, uh, Mr. Mr. Smith has been in this property from, for close to fifty years, nineteen seventy-two, and he's got a twenty-five thousand square foot, uh, distribution warehouse. And what we're proposing is we're adding, uh, seventy-five thousand square feet, bringing it roughly to a hundred thousand square feet. And, um, we're asking for a reduction in that, in that right-of-way. Um, and will, or not the right-of-way, the reduction in that, in the setback, and that new re, the new setback will be, um, it, it would be based on the plan that we submitted. It's a hundred feet, but since then, Mr. Smith has then purchased, uh, an, another fifty-foot parcel that PWC is gonna be rerouting a water line. So ultimately, there will be, there will still be a hundred and fifty-foot buffer. Um, he, the, this, uh, if you look at the, if, if you look at the drawing and see how the building is oriented, um, this is a, this is like a long-term storage. It's not at all like a trucking terminal. Uh, we're only having dock doors in the front, similar to the existing buildings, got three dock doors in the, in the front. And, uh, we're, we're adding, we're proposing about five dock doors on the new section. So, um, he, he has stated that there's only gonna be five to seven trucks a day, and it's, again- five to seven trucks a day, and it's, again, it's a long-term store, so the, they come in, things go in the front, the trucks leave, um, there's no real yard out there, no truck yard, no truck, no terminal, anything like that, so it's, it's kind of like a, um, you know, he has, has large clients that store lots of materials for months or even years, and then they, they come, they come and get them as they need them. Um, and so I'm here to also answer any technical questions that anybody may have regarding the property or the construction.
Thank you, sir. Um, you said we have five speakers?
Um, actually four, sir.
Are they all in favor or again?
Uh, we have three in favor and one in opposition.
Uh, counsel, just to, uh, well, we'll take it one at a time, any questions for, uh, uh, I did have.
Actually, Mayor?
Do we typically let all of them go?
Yes, and then that way, if their questions are not answered by a subsequent speaker.
Okay, yeah, couldn't remember, it's been a while since we had him in person.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, thank you, sir, I, I would, uh, hang around socially distanced, of course, and, uh, we'll call you. All right.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Matthew M. Smith, Junior.
Hello, Mr. Smith.
And sir, if you would raise your right hand, please. If you would raise your right hand, please, sir.
Raise your right.
Sorry. Do you affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, so help your God?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Colvin and members of council, my name is Matthew Smith, live at thirty-one oh one Hyman Place here in Fayetteville. Eminem Smith Storage Warehouse has been a part of this city since nineteen thirty-four. Commercial merchandise division was opened up at six oh one Hillsborough Street in nineteen seventy-two, we've been there forty-eight years. We purchased this piece of property because it was large enough that we would be able to expand on it with our operation. At the time we bought it, I was actually in the moving and storage business, and we were doing general commodity storage and distribution, which is now called third-party logistics. Uh, we handle materials for companies like Goodyear Eaton Corporation. Uh, we did for the Black and Decker plant here before they closed, uh, our, uh, movement in and out of the area, uh, is, I'm gonna say very limited, there's not a lot of traffic, it's not a trucking terminal per se. Uh, when we bought the property, it was zoned M two industrial, and we had no problem with setbacks, and with the UDO, this did then present a problem when we looked at making, uh, this expansion. Uh, we have a closed-circuit TV system that covers our property both inside and out. The TV, uh, system has been used by the city police department in several cases, uh, one where an accident occurred on Hillsborough Street and the cameras caught the entire thing. We have also worked with the, uh, police department in trying to improve the condition of the neighborhood. Uh, if you walked over to my, this is the north side of my building right now, you would see a line of bullet holes from an Uzi. The fire came from over on Edward Street. Edward Street has been cleaned up. Uh, the situation, uh, in the neighborhood, uh, we, as Mr. Neil Smith said, we just recently purchased a fifty-foot street adjoining our northern side of our property. Uh, this has been a bone of contention, not only for us, but other people in the neighborhood as well. This will be cleaned up. Uh, part of that property is going to be used by PWC to reroute a thirty-six-inch sewer line that goes diagonally across my property at the present time. The property has crepe murals across the front of it. Unfortunately, these are going to be disturbed by PWC, but they're, have promised that they will replant with similar type materials. Uh, we also are going to do some additional, uh, beautification to the area. When we open this facility, we will be adding another five to seven personnel to our operation, and some of these people can come from this neighborhood itself. Uh, we've been there for forty-eight years, we have never had a traffic problem, we have never had a problem with the neighborhood from a standpoint of noise or traffic, and we would ask that you approve our application. Thank you, I would be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, we will, uh, uh, catch you if, if the council has any questions, if you could, uh, just stay close by, sir, thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Brian Wellborn. Oh, okay. Our final speaker for this item is Mr. Leon Geddy.
Mr. Geddy, how are you, sir?
I'm great, Mayor, and I hope everybody else is doing well this evening as well.
Sir, if you would raise your right hand, please, I have to swear you in. So, do you affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, so help your God?
Absolutely, I do.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, uh, as stated, my name is Leon Geddy, uh, I represent my family.
Mr. Geddy, can you speak into the mic a little bit?
Yes, I represent my family that has stayed on Edward Street since, uh, nineteen seventy. So, we were actually there, we preceded Mr. Smith's business, a- and I heard him say that, uh, his bit, they had never had any problems with noise, and I'm quite sure he wasn't aware, but they have been problems in years past, his business was busier, and I guess they had like a second shift, and on into the night, you would hear the trucks, and they used the railway at that time, dropping the, uh, ramps, and even now, that property, as you can tell from the maps, located in between three tracks, railroad tracks, which creates all kind of noise in addition to the MLK, uh, freeway, so it's far from a low-decibel neighborhood. And since the elimination of the trees and housing at the end of Merkson Road, right across from where V Point used to be, now that noise buffer has been eliminated, which creates additional noise. So I would, I don't think anyone in this room would want additional noise in their neighborhood, and I hear, yeah, we got a hundred and fifty-foot buffer. But if you at a concert, how, how far do you think that noise travel? A hundred and fifty foot is not much, and when you're talking about trucks or other things, I don't know, I'm not a clairvoyant, I can't say what his business is going to produce. I'm just here speaking in opposition, hoping that you would side with us to say, no, w- that's the last thing we need, is something else that's going to bring noise into our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No, we have no further speakers.
All right, so with that, we'll close the public hearing. Um, do have a question for Councilwoman Kinston, but I did have a question for staff, uh, Ms. Baptiste or staff members, and Ms. Baptiste, I know you may not know the answer, but, uh, we've got enough institutional knowledge in here, so when, when the council set a five hundred-foot buffer, um, in between this type of business and neighborhoods, uh, what was the intent behind that?
Unfortunately, I was not here when the original, um, when this UDO was adopted, so I am not sure what the intent was.
So that came in with the, with the UDO adoption in thirteen?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so I would assume in cases like this, to where you, you have large buffers in between commercial business and residence, that it is for sound and the impact, is that, is that how it typically is?
It could be, um, it could, it's, it could also be, um, a way to allow staff to, um, staff and the city council to look at different factors and see, um, what's appropriate and what's not appropriate in certain areas.
Okay. All right, uh, I guess that gets where I need to be, I think. Um.
It's kind of hard to go back and, and try to figure out what, what the intent was for numbers.
So, you came to us from another jurisdiction, right?
Yes, sir.
So, do you typically see, um, when you typically see a high commercial area like this, this close to a neighborhood, is, is a five hundred-foot buffer unusual or usual, is a hundred-foot buffer, like requested a hundred and forty, fifty feet, that it would be, that would it be, uh, re- reduced to, I assume? Uh, what do you commonly see, uh, as a, what's your professional apparent, uh, experience say about that?
In my professional experience from different municipalities, um, five hundred foot is a little bit high. Um, generally, I've seen between a hundred and two fifty, um, with additional, um, screening, such as lan- additional landscaping or, um, fencing and stuff like that, um, to mitigate, um, the use.
Was any additional, and the, the reduction amount of, if this is approved, the reduction amount is how, from the new building constructed to the residence would be, how far, was it a hundred and forty or fifty feet?
To, currently from the property line at the lowest end, it looks like it's about a hundred and ninety feet right here. Um, but he has also purchased this property right here, that'll give an additional, um, I'm not sure how many feet, because he don't, he doesn't have it marked off. So this will give a, additional, um, buffer along right in this area.
Engineer answer that question, the specifics about your project? Sir, could you, uh? So wi- with the construction of the addition, the, the additional building, with the acquisition of the, of the additional lot, what is, what would be the amount of the buffer in between the new building and the neighborhood?
At the, at that, at the closest corner down there, it will be about a hundred and sixty feet. Um, right now, we're a hundred and eight, we're getting another fifty feet, and that, uh, and then down, as you're getting back towards the, the back of the property, um, I don't have that on here, but we're gaining probably another hundred feet.
Okay, so, had you, or the owner, proposed any of those, uh, mitigation strategies, trees, fences or, or things to lessen the impact?
Well, we're, we're planning a debuffer per the ordinance for the UDO.
I, I know what you're applying for, which is to.
No, a planting, the planting strip.
Planting, okay.
Yeah, the planting strip is a, it's a de- a debuffer.
O- okay, explain that a little bit?
That's, uh, it's, it's a, the density of trees that are required by the ordinance at that, at that, at that side. So we're, we're doing plantings across the front, um, and then, and then, uh, we've also got, we're get- we're gonna either use the existing or plant new so that we meet that, that requirement from the ordinance.
So let, let me ask it a different way, so, so your answer is yes, that you plan to add additional trees, vents, et cetera, to, to increase the buffer if, if approved?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, Councilwoman, uh, Kinston?
Thank you, Mayor, and I do have two questions. Um, the first question that I have is, it indicates on the, the plan, on the planning and zoning, um, development application, that the hours of operation are from seven AM to four PM. Um, one of the questions that I have is that, are those hours of operations going to be expanded?
That would, uh, that's, that, that would be a question for Mr. Smith.
Our normal hours of operation are from seven to four. I think part of your question relates to the fact that the city has an ordinance that pro- prohibits commercial vehicles to be parked in a residential area. We have, uh, and the information that you have says there's eight acres, there's actually ten acres there. Uh, and we do have for commercial, uh, motor vehicles that park on the property because they can't take them to their home. Uh, and normally, there's about, uh, probably seven or eight of those on the property at any given time. Uh, the majority of them leave out early in the morning, come back late in the afternoon. Uh, the additional traffic that would be created by this addition to the facility would probably be no more than five to seven trucks in a day. The gentleman, uh, I think mentioned something about noise from the railroad. Uh, the spur that goes into that property, uh, has not been in use for over ten years, and is not in use today, and there are no plans for it to be.
Thank you, sir, did, did I catch your question, Councilman?
Yes, that answered the first question, then I have one other question. Um, and this is for, and I do apologize, the gentleman in opposition, I have a question for him. Can you indicate to me what is the latest hour that you recall hearing noise from the facility?
Now, in all honesty, I'm making reference to when his business was much busier years ago. Now, at that time, it was easily eleven o'clock or later, because see, I was in high school then, and I can remember those, like I say, ramps, and he, he even mentioned that they hadn't used the tracks in a while, and, and that's very true. But again, when you have commercial trucks and the fact of, at that time, the railroad, it was very noisy. And even now, you know, if, if, if you were sleeping, and I pull up behind your house in a hundred and fifty-foot buffer with a tractor-trailer, unless you are awful sound sleeper, you know, it's gonna disturb you, you know, so I hope that answers your question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, uh, Councilmember Wright?
Uh, yes, I guess this would be for the owner. Uh, for the owner, so my question would be, uh, the existing building that you have, now, looking at the, um, the drawing, uh, or the picture itself, how far is that from the existing buffer right now? That building and the new building, um, you're saying a hundred and sixty, where would that, would that building be closer to the buffer than the existing building is already?
The new building would be on the north side of the existing building.
S- so, okay, so looking at this, so looking, this, this is the new building, or this is an exist- the existing building that we're looking at on the diaphragm?
Okay, the one, the darker part is the new building.
All, okay.
The white part, uh,
Okay.
To the bottom left is existing.
It's the existing, okay.
And the distance from the building itself, uh, to the buffer, uh, is, from my understanding, not the distance they're actually talking about, they're talking about the distance from the property line to the buffer.
The distance from the property line to the buffer, and so your engineer said, I think he quoted a hundred and sixty feet, wants the additional buffer. And so your engineer said, I think he quoted a hundred and sixty feet, wants the additional buffer is added? Is that, uh, the maximum of, of the buffer for the new building?
That's the minimum.
That's the minimum, what's the maximum?
It, it's about, it, it adds, it adds close to, it, it adds, probably adds another fifty feet to that.
About another fifty? So you're looking at my two hundred and ten feet?
Yeah, so we're, we're going from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and something.
And the trucks will, uh, entering, uh, uh, front near Hillsborough? Or what would be going on near the buffer in the back? Will there be any activities in the back of that building for truck, for trucks?
No, sir, there would be no activity by trucks in the back or on the north side.
Okay.
Which would be toward the residential side. The vehicles would come in off of Hillsborough Street through the current entrance and go to the dock area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir, uh, Councilman Davis?
Yes, I'm trying to get my bearings, um, is this the railroad track that runs down the station right here? Uh, the Green Street Railroad, is that the same track that runs right by it?
There, there, there is a track that goes, it's called a A N Y, uh, that goes out to Fort Bragg, is back there. And there's, there was a spur, there's still some trackage back there behind the current building. We actually had, and that's the noise he was talking about. Uh, we had a piggyback, a T O F C where the trailers that are loaded on rail cars and moved across the country. That was a roll-on, they drove them on, drove them off, but that operation stopped every day at five o'clock.
So excluding, excluding your spur, trains still, we're hearing a train now, is that train gonna use the track behind this building to keep going north?
Uh, not to come to our property.
No, no, I'm not talking about your property, the tracks behind you, I see there's a spur going on your property.
The track that runs along Hillsborough Street goes out to Fort Bragg, and we have no control over what the railroad does, uh, and when they move on that track.
So trains, like, they're hearing it right now, trains are still on that, right on that track, right in front of your building right now?
That, that train that you hear is on the C S X mainline rail that runs right beside the Woodpecker Stadium.
Thank you.
Secker Stadium.
Thank you, Councilman.
Uh, there are no through trains that run on the track, uh, parallel to Hillsborough. They go from the, uh, yard over between Russell Street and Franklin Street, uh, out to Fort Bragg and back.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember Waddell?
Mayor Colvin, I withdraw my question, thank you.
Okay. Uh, did you have something to add to that comment, sir?
Thank you for taking that comment. Yeah, the destination is irrelevant. When you hear that train coming up and down the track, and there's one on Moore Street, Hillsborough, which, he's right, the one on Hillsborough is not that active at night, but that one going from Fort Bragg, depending upon troop activity, is very busy. So again, through no impact of his, I, I, I agree, Mr. Smith has no, nothing to do with that. But it also doesn't help the residents of our community to have something else to come in and add additional noise. It's, it's the point that I would like for everyone to see. So if we can do anything, even, uh, opposing that expansion, to eliminate any noise, would be greatly appreciated by our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Ingram, did you have a question, or were you trying to make a? Well, was that, was that a sworn speaker, Madam Clerk, that's on the line?
Uh, yes, sir, I was not aware that we had somebody on Zoom.
Oh, okay.
It's, uh, Ms. May Matthews, and I will need to swear her in.
Uh, Ms. Matthews, we apologize, we didn't realize, do I need to open back up the public hearing, uh, Madam Attorney? All right, so we'll open up the, the public hearing, Ms. Matthews, can you hear us? Ms. Matthews? Is she muted? Ms. Matthews, uh, we'll, we'll unmute you.
I unmute you.
Okay, we got you now. All right, so sorry about that, can you? Can you turn your television down?
I don't have a television.
There's something giving some feedback on there, are, are you listening to the council meeting on television or at radio or something? Okay, we can hear you better now. Um, please state your name and your address for us.
Uh, I need to swear her in.
Oh, uh, the, the clerk needs to swear you in, I didn't know we could do that remotely.
Well, uh, Ms. Matthews, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Mayor, she hung up.
She did. All right, we'll give her a minute to call back. Um, I'll, I'll ask my question, procedure question after this. Um, Councilmember Ingram, you had a, a question? All right, uh, did we have a contact number for her, or was that Zoom?
That was Zoom, sir.
All right, uh, Councilman Hare?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, just for bringing one, everyone up to speed, that was the purpose of that. Five hundred feet back at that, back at that time was the distance for sound and buffering that we had come up with, uh, years ago. But, uh, for clarification for me, in my understanding, that the only entrance, and this is for the owners, the only entrance and exit off of that property is off of Hillsborough Street? Of what I, let me see if I can go back to?
Yes, sir, that is correct, directly in front of Chant Street.
Say that again, sir?
The only entrance or exit is on Hillsborough Street, directly in front of Chant Street.
In front of Chant, okay, gotcha, all right, thank you, sir, thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Ingram, you had a question? All right, so I did have a question for you, Mr. Smith and, and the architect. So, the seventy-six thousand square feet addition, um, is that the only option that you have? Or is there any type of reconfiguration that you could use that did not encroach into this neighborhood? Uh, three hundred, two hundred and forty feet?
Yeah, there's, there's, there, there's no other option, we, the, there, there wouldn't be any way to get a five hundred foot buffer on this piece of profer- property anywhere. Existing buildings not in compliance.
Okay.
And, uh, so this was, uh, there, this was, this was the best way to, to achieve what we needed to, to get. There really is no other, other way.
Was seventy-six thousand square feet your only option that made this work for your business plan?
That, yes, I mean, that, that's.
We are currently operating slightly over a hundred thousand square feet at another location, and we wanted to consolidate everything into one location. Uh, and these seventy-six, seventy-five thousand square feet, uh, is the only way that is practical for us to operate in this type of a business. Uh, the U D O did not exist when we bought the property, we had no idea anything of that nature would be, uh, brought forward. And, uh, this will bring approximately two million dollars to your tax books.
Okay, thank you, and Mr. Smith, how, how big is your existing, uh, building?
The current building there is seventy-five thousand square feet, and we have a maintenance facility on the southeast corner that's about twelve thousand square feet.
Thank you, sir. Um, ma'am, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we can hear you a little better now, sorry about the technical difficulties. Can you state your name and your, uh, address? Oh, you need to be sworn in, uh, Madam Clerk. Uh, can you raise your right hand wherever you are?
Okay, I have.
Okay. Do you affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, ma'am.
You got on speaker?
All right, so ma'am, uh, can you state your name and give your address for us?
My name is May Matthews, and I reside at nine eighteen Business Drive in Bearville, North Carolina, two eight three one one.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Go ahead.
To, to Mayor Colvin and the city council, council members. It is my understanding that property owners have the right to a reasonable, comfortable, and convenience in the co- occupation and use of their property. My mother has lived at five twenty Edward Street for fifty years. It is the family home that has seen her children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. My mother is a chef's officious senior, she's about to celebrate her eighty-seventh birthday in a few days. She has watched as this peaceful residential community has been chipped away by vacant enterprises that compromises the safety and enjoyment of her home. The additional proposed encochement of industrial space upon her property impedes the, impedes the enjoyment of the residential space, as well as compromising of the value and resale potential of all business in that area. On her behalf, I would like to know why the city continues to grant exceptions to its own zoning laws, meant to protect the citizens. When does it end? How much more would the residents of this area be en- encroached upon? What is the city's plan for this community? Is it the city's intention to convert the entire area to a commercial zone? If so, how would the residents be compensated for the decline in value caused by these decisions? Decline in values are also inhibit the resident's ability to relocate. For this day, the Hillsborough Street interest, the downtown has been blocked off with the constructions of the new Rowan Street Bridge, the regimens of this area. Agreementary was approved and is in the process of being built, jeopardizing the health of people in this area, as well as further compromising property values. A building for the homeless was constructed against the wishes of the community. In this addition, and when having, in this additional industrial, excuse me, industrial area is approved, it will cause heavy vehicle movement of residential streets. There is an increase in accidents when heavy vehicles pass through residential areas. This is a danger to elderly people and families with children. This is why industrial zones should not be so close to residence, residential, and not permitted in planned communities. The only restrictions in general are designed to protect residents, maintain property values, and avoid nuisance by providing distant areas, distinct areas for certain types of development and use. Residential property zoning limits are eliminated commercial and industrial activities to reduce commercial traffic where families reside, as well as to reduce noise, pollution, and other nuisances. This also protects residential property values and improves quality of life for the people who live in that particular area. All residents in this area have the right to quiet enjoyment of their home, which includes limiting aesthetic noise from nearby properties under and after construction. However, after fifty years of residences, residents being in that area, industrialization is threatened to drive my mother from her home. It goes without saying that the residents of this community have, have rights. In short, all residents in this area have the right to enjoy peaceful community and livelihood. They also have a right to truthfully know, not only what this industrial company is doing to the community, but also what the city future plans off of this area. It's the city's responsibility to protect the safety and well-being of the residents living here. The plan for invasive communication is dangerous to residents and is not a sensible way to move forward. Plans of this nature should be confined outside the residential areas. Should the city decide this area must be industrialized, then residents should, should do, should be duly compensated for having to vacate their homes. Just thank you in regards, this is from my brother Raymond Peterson and myself, my mother's children, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, so that was the final, so we could, with that, we'll close.
Yes, sir.
The public hearing, so, um, Councilmember Ingram, I can't tell if, you know, I've come, no, we still have questions. So I'll come back to you, yours is for motion, right? Okay. Um, Councilman Davis, did you have a second question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, my question is for, um, zoning, planning, probably Dr. Newton or someone from their department. Um, I was looking over the legislative text, and I was wanting to ask a question, uh, they recommended, um, that, um, that, that it be approved based on a number of, um, assessments. Um, and one being that the site exists, the existing site does not posing a harm to the surrounding area. And I wanted to ask him, um, in, in his professional assessment, does the, uh, site and sound mitigation plan, meaning buffer for trees, the standard buffering that all companies are required, or businesses are required to put in place between residential transitional zones? What, what is that for the clarity of the council, so that we can understand what the citizens would be able to expect from this?
Um, again, I'm Dr. Jerry Newton, Development Services Director, and I'm answering the questions. Uh, if you want me to be sworn in, I can, but as staff, I don't have to be, however you want to proceed. To answer your question directly, um, what you have in front of you is you have almost two acres that they're proposing to put in under roof, adding on to their half acre under roof spot just to the north. They have extra buffering that's a requirement. They also will be improving the site with what you see in the detention retention, just to the north of it. The reason that they'd have to acquire the property, uh, north to relocate a line, is that they are traversing that with P W C putting a, a line, see a diagonal line on that plan. So the buffering that he's referring to is our most dense buffering. But in addition to that, they have additional landscaping in the front on Hillsborough, uh, to show that they're gonna, uh, screen it and have more. In terms of ambient noise coming from the railroad, by having an actual facility setting up next to it, as a trumpet would do, it moves in a different direction. So in terms of how the staff looked at it, how the commission looked at it, this is an area that is zoned already for the use. So then the question became, is this reduction of something that they're already not meeting, is a reduction of a standard of five hundred, which is typically put in place when you're looking at industrial parks and you're trying to create separations? But when you are in communities such as Fayetteville, where it was partially a mill town, where you had mills, and then you had the, uh, businesses and all the residents around and mixed, it's typical to have places that don't fit that standard. That's why this one's here. So from the professional view of the planners who looked at it, it makes sense to allow this addition. It furthers what we say of, uh, bringing more business in, it's already zoned for it. The issue then becomes, is that enough distance in our, uh, position? And that of the commission looking at it, it is.
The zoning commission and planning and, and your top team looked at it and saw that?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. All right, um, Councilman Hare, did you have another question?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, um, Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to deny the special use permit, as it does not meet findings of fact number seven. The special use allows, uh, for the protection of her property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the use, uses permitted in the zoning district.
All right, uh, the motion on the floor is to deny, um, so it means if we vote in the affirmative in green, that mean support the denial. So there's a motion, Councilmember Ingram is a second by Councilmember Kinston. Is that your like? Okay, all right, I missed your question. Um, I've got a motion on the floor. Let's see if we have a second, um, and then we'll, we'll, we'll catch you during the discussion question phase, okay? Is, is there a second to, uh, the motion on the floor to deny? So there's a second by Councilmember Wright, uh, discussion on the motion. Uh, Councilmember Kinston.
I, I want to have someone to come, um, come back up and pull item number six up. I have a quick question about placement of one of the aerial views.
Councilmember Kinston, can you turn your microphone on and restate your question?
I'm sorry. If I can have staff to come back up and, um, pull item number six. And there's a question on the aerial view. And then Mr. Smith may need to address it as well. If you go to the aerial view, it's, um, page three of three. And I apologize, this may be more for Mr. Smith. In looking at the aerial view picture, where it looks like the, Mr. Smith, where the trucks are located on the picture, um, it's actually this one, sorry.
Staff, can you, are you all?
It's actually this picture. It's in, um, six, it's in six, and then it's the third slide.
When you say in the aerial view, you mean the front view? So that's the elevation, the front view?
That's not it. It's not it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, I thought I saw it. It's on here. Just from a close look, we'll tell you when it stopped.
Right, is that it?
No, sir.
That's the exact view except it's not, it's not colored for trees. That's the exact same view of the picture.
Oh, she's, she's talking about this one. Yeah. Uh, so Tarsus, it's a, it's a three D image of, of, uh, of it with the, with the trees in the picture.
I don't know if you can hand that to him.
Yeah, it's a, it's a pictorial view. The sky looking down.
So my question is where it has Chance Street, and then it has an entrance. There's a number of trucks that are parked, um, to the east that shows, it looks like trucks there, and then it also looks at the bottom, um, east, it looks like trucks at the bottom. Is that the normal position if your trucks are gonna be overnight or coming in waiting to load or unload? Is that the position of it to the back of, um, Chance Street?
Uh, no, ma'am. The trucks that you're referring to that are backed up towards Hillsborough Street, these are ones that I was talking about earlier. They are drivers that live in Fayetteville. Some of them live in that area, but they cannot park their trucks, uh, in a residential area. And we allow them to park on our property. And, uh, the ones to the south, those are, uh, and this is a recent photo, uh, those are, uh, trailers that are in the process of being sold for storage trailers. And they will not be there. As a matter of fact, the, uh, little bit of grass area there in the front, uh, is part of our beautification. We're planning to put a fountain up out there.
Okay. And so the, behind those trucks, there is, it looks like it says that there's some land, that that is landscape, is that current landscape that's there now?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Crape myrtles.
But those are the ones that are gonna be removed? Did you say those are gonna be removed? I'm sorry, did you say that those, some of those would be removed?
No, well, some of those are probably gonna be damaged by P W C when they put their sewer line in. But they are also, will be required to replace them with a, uh, similar or identical, uh, type, uh, plantings.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, all right, council, any other questions? All right, um, so we have a, yes, ma'am.
I'm looking at the findings of fact, and I'm looking particularly at number four and almost in line with the comment that, or the question that Councilmember Kinston asked. Um, the visual impacts of the proposed use on adjacent lands. When you look at the photo, when we are looking at the photos that were, were presented, there's a picture that shows those trucks, um, and it's a, it's a, a regular photograph. The photograph is, is a bit concerning to me in terms of the aesthetic of the use of the property as it relates to its surroundings. A lot of effort and attention has gone into attempting to bring up the, 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 the visual es- aesthetic in addition to cleaning up the, the, the culture and the climate of that area. And I just would like to know if, if maybe there's something in this plan that specifically speaks to some level of beautification of that piece of property if they're going to be making these amendments? Because I just don't, I don't see, I don't see being able to say, yes, let's, let's expand the use if there's not going to be something that's going to help lessen the visual impact on, of the proposed use on the adjacent lands. In addition to maybe the noise concern. So, Councilmember Ingram, I guess I'm asking if you would be willing to consider number four as a, as a, as an inclusion for your motion to deny if you were to, to continue with the denial request?
Did, did you give specifics as, did, did you name in the motion?
I did, I did make, I did name, um, a findings of fact. Would you like me to?
You said you named all eight?
No, I did not. I only made, named the one.
Okay.
I am, I am.
If you'd like to amend.
Sure, I would like to amend my motion to restate to, I would like to make a motion to deny the special use permit, um, to include findings of fact number four and findings of fact number seven.
So if I understand you correct, you, you want a motion to deny based on item number four out of the eight.
Read that, ma'am. It, uh, with the makeup of the motion, read that since it is a motion for denial.
Yeah, so you, you need to include your speci- specifics.
Uh, ma'am, council, I would like to amend my, uh, motion and restate to say, I would like to make a motion to deny the special use of permit based on, uh, findings of fact number four. The special use is confirmed to minimize adverse effects, including visual impacts of the proposed use of adjacent lands.
Is not.
Is, which is not. Um, and findings of fact number seven, the special use does not allow for protection of property values and the ability of neighbor, neighboring lands to develop the uses permitted in the zoning district.
Okay, there's a mo, there's amended motion by Councilmember, uh, Ingram. There was a second by? Okay, all right, by Councilmember Wright, uh, to deny based on, uh, those two, uh, items. Any further discussion? All right, council, I'll look to your vote, and remember this vote is to.
One first question, Mayor Colvin.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I think that this will probably be to Attorney McDonald. Are we permitted, i- in our vote, are we permitted to vote to approve or deny based on one of the findings of fact, or do we have to be in agreement with both of the findings of fact?
They must, they must, there must be a finding on all eight. The motion was for one, which is sufficient. But at, as I understood it, at your request, you added two. And so the motion now includes two factors as the basis for the denial.
Okay, and if I may express a concern just before we take this vote, because I know that we've kind of been in this water before. My concern is that with the item that was presented in terms of, um, Councilmember Ingram, what number was that? Number?
Four and seven, seven.
Number seven. So my concern with number seven is when we look at the zoning of that area, I think that we've been presented information from our staff that does indicate that the zoning supports what we're asking for. The issue is the U D O does not support the, 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 the spacing of what's being asked for. And so my concern would be the inclusion of number seven could potentially lead to some, some dicey area. And so I, I would, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the denial based upon, um, number four and even number, number one specifically, because number one is asking us to waive, um, one of the findings of fact. And, you know, number one, I think, would be a strong enough basis, I think. But I'm just concerned that the inclusion of number seven may, may potentially, um, get us in, make, yeah, I'm gonna leave that, that there. But I guess my question is, how do, how do I proceed with that being that I am?
So if I.
Two separate motions, Attorney McDonald?
Well, I think if, um, if you have a better, more comprehensive motion, uh, from what I hear you say, maybe Councilmember Ingram should withdraw that and, and let you all decide who, who makes the motion. I, I don't know if.
I don't want to necessarily ask her to withdraw her motion, but if it, if it, if it needs to be, and I guess this, this is the part I'm getting clarification from Attorney McDonald. If it needs to be that her motion stands without the inclusion of any additional numbers, and then we vote on that, and then if there needs to be a second motion made, then that's an alternative. But I, I don't want to necessarily, I don't want to speak on behalf of Councilmember Ingram. I, I'd like for her to, you know, make that decision without my input. But I do, you know, I'm just a little concerned with the way it stands. So I leave that to Attorney McDonald to explain to me.
Attorney, when you, you vote to deny, when you vote to approve, it becau, it's because it meets the eight findings. When you vote to deny, that means that something didn't meet it. Do you need to get as specific as? Cause I, I don't want us to overcomplicate this. This is a nightmare with the minutes. So, a, a, a denial means that you, that one of the eight were not met, okay? Um, so whatever that is, I mean, you can get specific, or you can vote to deny if that's your call. But I think the more we, we try to apply which one applies to it, it makes it overly complicated. But it's your motion, it's on the floor, it's amended to include four and seven. Uh, any further changes you would like to make, cause I'm ready to end the discussion stays and, and vote. Okay, all right. So, council, there's a motion to deny, uh, based on, uh, items number four and seven. It was seconded by Councilmember Wright. We've discussed it. Um, remember your green button is to deny. Uh, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Uh, Councilmember Waddell.
Still waiting on a little bit of clarification to my question to, to help me understand how to.
Yes, ma'am, we've ended the discussion phase, so.
I understand that, but my question was never answered during the discussion phase, so.
Are you, are you voting?
Once I get, once I get a little clarification.
All right.
I'm sorry, Ms. Waddell, can you repeat your question?
I just want to know if with two of them, with two findings of fact, I'm still not clear. If, when I make this vote, do I have to be in agreement with both findings of fact?
Yes, because the motion on the floor includes two findings of fact.
Okay.
One of which she inserted, right?
So with, so with that, then my, my vote is red.
Mayor, just so, just so we clarify, because the motion on the floor is a negative motion.
To deny?
To deny. Clarified so that we're, so that everyone on the dais is clear as to what it means when you press your green button and your red button.
I've reiterated it several times, but I think.
Yes, sir.
All right. So, this is to vote in favor of denial. So a green means that you vote to deny, red means that you do not vote to deny, right? All right, so Councilmember Waddell is red, uh, if I understand her correct. And so, Madam Clerk, the motion to deny carries. Those voting in favor of the denial, uh, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, Wright, uh, Colvin, Ingram, Hare, and Kinston. Those voting in, against the denial, Councilman Davis, Jensen, and Waddell. Okay. All right. Yes.
City Attorney, if I may ask. I'll ask you offline, it's fine.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Ingram, we have to, we have to move on if this is not pertaining to the next item. Okay, well, well, you can ask her offline, so we need to, we, okay, all right. So, uh, item eight point zero five. Hey, sir?
I may need a little help. All right, where is mine?
Here, I gotta help you, sir. I'll help you. Mr. Mayor, good evening. Uh, David Nash from Development Services. Um, the case before you tonight is an annexation request. You haven't had one of these in about a year. So, um, this is one we have now from, um, a property owner named Promuck Enterprises. Um, it's a request to do a satellite annexation along Ramsey Street, along the western side, uh, just south of Bullard Circle. We'll be showing you some photos in a minute, but you'll see that it's, uh, right across almost from, uh, the Goodyear Plant, way up on Ramsey Street. Um, it's adjacent or nearby to District One, Ms. Jensen. And it's only three point four four acres. Uh, it would be a satellite annexation. Um, on this map, this is like the vicinity map, the area requested is shown in blue. Um, the area in the city is shaded in yellow, the red lines are current city limits. You can see that the Goodyear Plant is nearby across Ramsey Street. This is Ramsey Street right here. Uh, Fairfield Farms subdivision over here, Greystone Farms subdivision here, the Goodyear Plant up here, the Bullard Circle residential neighborhood is back here, uh, that you get to off of the street named Bullard Circle. It's just the same map. This is our legal description map for this request. A couple photos of the area. Uh, this is looking north on Ramsey Street. The property requested for annexation is on the left side. Um, you see our zoning sign out there, it's been posted for a while. Now we're looking south on Ramsey. Now the property's on the right. You're at the intersection of Bullard Circle and Ramsey Street. We're up on Bullard Circle now looking out towards Ramsey. The property's on the right here in this particular photo. And finally, we're back at the intersection of Bullard Circle and Ramsey and looking over diagonally towards the Goodyear Plant. So hopefully that helps you see the, um, overall context here we're talking about. Um, as mentioned, this is a satellite annexation, and your memo in your packet spelled out some of the, uh, satellite standards. I thought I would go through these real quickly. Um, there are five standards in the statute that a satellite area has to comply with. And the first one is that, um, the nearest point is not more than three miles away from the primary corporate limits of Fayetteville. Uh, this is only three hundred and five feet away, so it's very much within that three mile distance. Uh, the second one, no point on the proposed satellite would be closer to the primary corporate limits of another city. Uh, Spring Lake is the closest city, but it's two point two, six miles away. Fayetteville's only point oh six. The third standard is that the area is so situated that the city can provide services. Our departments have reviewed the area. Uh, no concerns were raised about it being a satellite or being too far away. Uh, the fourth is that no. Uh, the fourth is that no subdivision will be split or fragmented by the proposal. Um, this is only one parcel, county tax records don't tell us anything to suggest that this is part of a subdivision. So it meets that standard. And finally, the area within the satellite corporate limits, uh, when you add it to all the other satellite areas, and we do have numerous small satellites, uh, doesn't exceed ten percent of the area within the overall primary corporate limits. Currently, the satellite areas make up one point three eight percent of the primary. Uh, this area is so small that you can't even see a difference at two decimal places, so the percentage remains the same. Um, these have been historically spelled out in your ordinance. There was some, uh, requests to, uh, maybe feature them a little bit for you, so here they, this is why we've gone through them. Um, as mentioned in your memo, there's basically four options we see. One would be to adopt the ordinance, uh, with effective date of August thirty one. Uh, two is to adopt it with a different effective date, it could be out as far as February twenty first of next year. Uh, the ordinance, the statute says it can be any date within six months of the date of passage of the ordinance. Um, the reason we're not recommending that it be effective tonight is that, um, there's in the notice of public hearing, it mentioned that the hearing would remain open for another twenty four hours, so you, you don't wanna pass it tonight and make it effective tonight. Going back to option three, that would be do not adopt the ordinance, and option four would be to table it action. Uh, the city staff recommends option one, that you do annex the area effective August thirty first, twenty twenty, and that would be consistent with the initial zoning case that was on your, um, consent agenda tonight. And that recommendation's based on the following, that the petition is sufficient, there's a memo in your packet from our real estate manager, Keisha Parker verifying that. Um, the property meets the statutory standards for a satellite area as we went through earlier. Uh, the departments have reviewed it, and so has P A B C, they're all able to serve the area, and there's more documentation in your report about all that, and the budget impact should be positive for the city. Uh, that concludes this presentation by staff, I think Mr. Oliveria has, uh, logged in by Zoom.
I, I just have a question for you, Miss, Miss Nash, make sure I heard you correct. So you said that the public comment section is still open for another twenty four hours?
I think it would be, yes sir, according to the way the notice was written.
Okay.
The public hearing.
Public hearing would be open, so-
Not the public hearing, the, um, there would be an additional time in which the council could receive additional comments.
So, so my question is, if we voted on it but made it effective August thirty first, and then some additional comments came in tomorrow that changed that, wouldn't that, I mean, isn't that kind of putting cart before the horse, because you're, are you really giving the public an opportunity to speak? If you do any action beforehand?
Well, I guess you would have the option to bring it back at your next council meeting on the twenty fourth and consider that information.
Counsel, that seems to me favorable, but I know we have a public speaker. How do we handle that, Madam Attorney? If, if, if council chooses to do it, council, we could move forward whatever your direction, I just wanted to raise that point that it's a little disingenuous to vote on something and then hear the public. Um, but, uh, we have a speaker, we can open the public hearing, we can continue it always, right? So, since we have a speaker, we will, uh, open the public hearing. Counsel, I'll ask you your temperature, whether you want to continue it, table the action or something else, so.
So, so Mayor, you could open the public hearing, um, and close the public hearing, but take no action tonight, and then-
Gotcha, okay. Alright, so with that, we'll open the public hearing, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we just have one speaker, Mr. Steve Olivero, and he's on Zoom.
Mr. Olivero, can you hear us?
Yes sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council, can you hear me alright?
Yes sir.
Do I need to be sworn in?
Uh, no, they're shaking their head no, but, uh, I think you're alright, sir.
My name's Steve Oliverio, I'm with Bartlett Engineering, I'm here at nineteen oh six Nash Street in Wilson, reprimanding, uh, representing Mina Dave and Promuck Enterprises on this project. Uh, I've been working very closely with staff, and I, I really haven't had a question until this just came up and highly unusual to talk about an additional twenty four hours of, of, uh, openness for, for comment, I mean, this, this, uh, item should have been advertised uh, in, in pointing to this meeting as the, the public hearing, so I need some explanation on the, uh, additional twenty four hours, it makes absolutely no sense to me, I've never run into that uh, in all my years of having, uh, something scheduled for a council meeting and a public hearing, and then having, uh, something pop up about, well, there's an extra twenty four hours, I, I don't think there's an issue or gonna be an issue, but uh, we, we prefer not to be, uh, tabled or sent to the next meeting if possible.
Uh, do you have any answers to any of that?
Yes sir, I, I'm prepared to respond, well, um, are we done?
Oh, well, I think he had a question, so before I close the public hearing, I wanted, I guess-
Yes, and I'm prepared to answer his question, but did he have any testimony?
Okay, so did you wanna render any testimony to it? I know you were asking about that one particular item, we'll, 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 we'll answer that question. Uh, but did, did you have any, anything else to contribute?
I really didn't have anything else, uh, we've been working closely with staff, and, uh, we agree with their, uh, staff report. Uh, we just, uh, have a question about this, uh, additional twenty four hours, uh, you know, past the meeting notice and public hearing. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions any of you may have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alright, Madam Attorney, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor, I think that, uh, Mr. Nash referred to, uh, the advertisement stating that uh, there would be an additional twenty four hour period, uh, to receive public comment. Uh, when the pandemic, uh, occurred and, uh, resulting in the shutdown and meetings, uh, remotely, there was legislation passed to allow for an additional twenty four hour, uh, comment uh, period to be submitted in order to try to balance, uh, the councils or public bodies uh, meetings, uh, meeting remotely, and or recognizing that some people may not be able to attend in person. And so, that is, uh, as I understand it from Mr. Nash, what he was referring to in terms of the advertisement indicated that there would be an additional comment period.
Okay, uh, did that answer your question, sir? Sir, are you there?
Are you there?
Yes sir. Mr. Olivero, did that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, but it, it confuses me also, um, how are you able to vote on any other thing tonight? Isn't there additional twenty four hours on everything on the agenda then, or?
Mr. Mayor, I can't answer that question again, uh, it is, uh, certainly council's pleasure. Uh, if it was advertised to say that you'll receive additional comment, then it is certainly council's pleasure uh, to allow for that period and to take action at your next meeting, uh, which is scheduled for two weeks from tonight.
Okay, um, don't we have a special meeting next Wednesday? Oh.
Yeah, yes sir, you do, I, I think that, um, you could certainly do that, um, when you looked at this, um, as Mr. Nash said, this annexation in many ways makes sense, I mean, that's, it's up to you, but um, you could definitely defer it until the nineteenth, and we could add it to the agenda for approval, or you could approve it and, um, with an effective date, as he said at the end of the month, Au- August thirty one, and then at any time between now and then, the next twenty four hours that you receive comment, which makes you feel that this annexation is not in the best interest of the city or the applicant, um, that you could bring it back at the nineteenth. But, um, I think what, um, uh, the property owner or the applicant is requesting is, um, some certainty, but you can definitely give them that on the nineteenth, if you have a special meeting, or as staff recommended, uh, proposed that you could adopt it with an effective date of August thirty first.
Well, I think, I think what he's asking, um, is, is what makes this one case unique, guess to why? Is it an additional twenty four hour?
Yes sir, at, uh, again, I just would have to surmise that the other items or special use permits for which in order to take testimony, you have to be sworn in, and if you are not here to be sworn in, you could not give testimony, so that is the difference in this item.
Alright, now, can, uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt, with your legal degree.
Mayor Pro Tim?
I am one of the best city managers in the country, yes. Stated clearly for the record.
Yeah, it's already on the record.
I'm just so happy that District One is making everybody smile and, you know, get along right now. Um, so what I will say is, I'm being the representative of District One, um, that area is, um, basically in the county. I have the most donut holes of anybody, um, it does need to be, um, annexed, I am, I am going to support it, I, I'm very, um, excited about the development in there. But I do have an issue with giving, voting on it, and then giving somebody twenty four hours to say something. But with that being said, and, you know, I was on the Zoom call for zoning, and it, it went smooth, there was nobody against it, you know, we have something, there are other things that were going on that people were there. I know that people, when they're driving by that sign, they see it. This is not something that nobody is seeing or knowing what's going on. With that being said though, I don't like it hanging out there that they have twenty four hours. If, if we, I was gonna say I wanted option one, where it could be, um, approved for August thirty first. There's no harm, there's no foul, because if we get it done at the next meeting, it can be done even earlier than August thirty first. So I am asking the council to, um, bring it back, um, for the next meeting. It's, we just cannot vote on something and then say, okay, you can tell us in twenty four hours whether you want it or not. I, I just don't feel comfortable with that. But as the representative there, I do not see how, um, yeah, we can do it Wednesday, I just think that, um, we need to wait. That is, do I have to make a motion, or do?
Yeah, I'll, I'll circle back to, I'll circle back to, oh, okay, yeah, so please, wrap that in a motion.
So I would like to make a motion that we take, um, item number eight point zero five and give it the twenty four hours for our citizens to be able to, um, weigh in if they would like and bring it back to our special meeting on, um, August nineteenth for a special vote.
Alright, there's a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, uh, to leave the, uh, well, the public he- hearing portion is in place already.
You closed the public hearing.
Well, closed the public hearing, but comment, public comment section, so we'll, we'll close the public hearing. The public comment section will, will remain in effect for twenty four hours, Council, I'm gonna re-hit the lights, because you started voting before I started talking. Alright, I, I got the second, okay, don't, no vote. Uh, there's a motion by Councilmember Ingram, I mean, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, there's a second by Councilmember Ingram, uh, to bring this back to the nineteenth meeting, special meeting next Wednesday. So please have that, uh, included in the agenda if this motion passes. Uh, any additional questions or comments on the motion during the discussion phase? Alright, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Uh, Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
Alright, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous, nine to one. Si- uh, Mr. Manager, have something?
If that was the last public hearing, I just wanna draw attention to, um, the administrative reports whenever you have a moment.
Okay, we have a moment, we typically don't talk about these, but, yes sir.
Uh, yes sir, um, Mayor and Council, um, on the agenda and in your packet, we have two administrative reports, one and coming back and bringing information on, uh, two council member requests, one about flooding investigation, a possible moratorium request for Lox Creek, and the other removal of the market house image from city property. As has been our practice, we stand ready to, um, uh, bring this to you at your next work session or at another meeting where we could schedule it for discussion. But what we'd like to do with the, um, council member request and other items is we'd like to put him on his administrative record so that we can document that we got you the information back, and you have a chance to read it, but then, um, schedule it for a, um, public meeting or work session at your choice. And so, if you have a chance to read it, if you just let us know when, you'd like to bring it back possibly for a discussion.
I was thinking the next work session.
Okay, we can do just that.
Okay, thank you, alright. Have a good evening.